Gail?
Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Present.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you for being flexible in terms of our venue and being able to pivot quickly to this beautiful place. So how lucky are we? A big thank you to staff, city staff, especially to James Hahn for setting this up and taking it down and setting it back up today, and also to James and Alma and the rest of the staff for making this happen. And thank you to Ojai and the community for being here and caring so much. So, James, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
Please stand, and we have our flag here on stage. Please stand and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. May we have approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
A second? Okay, great. Thank you. Any presentations or commission reports, James?
No. We did not receive any present-- or we do not have any presentations or commissioner reports today.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. The public hearing is now open. And number one is the extension of urgency ordinance placing moratorium on new formula business. So just to review, we've adopted a moratorium, which is a big pause, and currently the planning commission is reviewing that, and the suggestion is that we allow them to continue. So that's what we'll be discussing tonight. And of course, the theme is maintaining our beautiful small-town ambiance and flavor, so-- which is one of the reasons why it makes-- what makes Ojai so special and beloved to all of us. So Matt, Mr. City Attorney, may we please have the staff report?
Certainly. Mayor, council, and members of the community, what we have before you is a proposed extension of the moratorium on formula businesses. That is, on any business that has five or more establishments, that has two or more of seven features that are common, and the common seven features are the same six in the current ordinance plus one new feature standardized collective marketing. A moratorium is currently in place. It was adopted June 22nd. It expires this Friday, August 6th, unless it is extended by the city council. Extension requires a four-fifths vote of council. Staff recommends the extension for up to one year, and that would be-- the ordinance would be, if adopted, extended for one year, but at such time as the council, after planning commission review is completed, adopts a final revised formula business ordinance, then the moratorium would be superseded. The recommendation is to adopt the extension to allow time for the planning commission's discussions, which have been ongoing at the last couple of meetings and are continuing through the fall and perhaps into the winter, to be completed for a full review of the ordinance and updating it to reflect the realities of modern business and how best to protect the community's character. With that, it's a four-fifths public here-- four-fifths vote requirement for an extension, and the recommendation is to receive any public comment and then consider the matter. And I'm available for any questions in the meantime.
I have a quick question for the mayor, right, Mayor? Mr. Summers, would it be in order, after we, you know, when we're deliberating, for this recommendation to include a date certain for planning commission to report back a recommendation?
Certainly, that would be reasonable.
Rather than leaving it open-ended?
Yeah, that'd be reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Matt. All right, moving on to public comment, we have one comment from Debbie Rubenstein. Debbie? Hi, Debbie.
I think you need to press the button. There you go.
Yeah. Hi. I am totally opposed to this project. I will give you an example, one example of why, and that is, my parents were here visiting us in Ojai. They stayed with us for like a week.
May I interrupt? Is this on the moratorium or the the active transportation project?
It's for Maricopa Highway.
Okay, that's number two. I know it's confusing. Do you mind waiting until we get that?
No, not at all.
I'll put a number two on your card. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any other public comments? Do we-- Gail, can you hear me?
No further. We have no virtual speakers on this, on item one.
Okay, thank you, Gail. All right, well, moving on, well, the public hearing is now closed, and we will move on to discussion.
Mayor, if I may just note that we did distribute 43 written public comments today. Several of those were about item two, but there were, I believe, six or seven that were about agenda item one, so just noting that. And those written public comments will be available as part of the posting on the-- on our city website for review by the public, so.
Thank you, James.
In discussion now?
Yes.
I'm gonna suggest that-- I'm ready to make a motion to approve this with the stipula-- additional stipulation that we have a date certain for a report back from planning commission. I don't want to have that open-ended, and I'm gonna suggest a date maybe of honor before October 30th for planning commission to have a definitive recommendation for council to then be able to agendize in a timely fashion. I know they recommend that just the mechanics of it are for a year, but I don't think we should wait that long, and I think we should have a date certain. So I'm gonna make a motion with that.
We did just receive--
I'm sorry.
--one public comment late, so that's okay. Can we go ahead? Cindy Convery making a public comment? No, we're on number one. Cindy, thank you.
Hi, Cindy Convery. Oh, hi. I just wanted to follow up on my comments during the last meeting where we discussed this, and it was referred to the planning commission, that I really hope you'll be able to find the way to find expertise to drive this issue and write the proper ordinance. And I felt like when I discussed it with the planning commission, their comments, they were-- had many, many, many questions and were not experts in franchises and formula businesses. So I really hope that you'll consider finding room in the budget, and maybe that means we're gonna raise taxes, I don't know. But, you know, find some way to really get the expertise on this, because it determines the future of Ojai, and it made me think back to when our city council sold our water rights in the 60s, and that didn't turn out so well, and I don't think they got the proper advice on that deal. So maybe let's think about this one, because it'll change the character of the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
All right, I'm gonna make a comment on the motion when the time is right. Okay. Bill, would you consider some wording, because if for some reason the planning commission cannot deliver by end October, there's an understanding. I mean, I'd like to word it so that we want it by October 30th, but if they need more time to let us know, because I want this to be done right, and if they-- it does seem complex. I have a little bit of concern, because August kind of disappears. We're gonna have a joint meeting. We've got housing. So really, September, October, that's 60 days.
Well, I'm-- the principle of a date certain is more important to me than just not having it completely open-ended, is what I would-- if there's another date, I'd be certainly willing to entertain it. I just think a date certain is important, and I have no problem. I believe that the city manager has the discretion to bring in some-- under the city manager's funding discretion could bring in a consultant or to help with the planning commission. I'd be in favor of that.
I would, too.
So do you-- would you have another date you'd propose, or?
Not-- I mean, 60 days is-- sounds reasonable. I just want it to be with the understanding, they can come to us if they need more time, right?
Of course.
Okay.
So that'll be my motion.
Okay.
I'll second. Randy?
I just had a question for the city attorney. So, Matt, if this doesn't pass tonight--
Microphone?
I'm sorry. Matt, if this doesn't pass tonight, where does it take us back to?
So if the council decides not to extend the moratorium, then the current ordinance returns in full effect, which means that it would still be the case that any form of the business that meets the current definition would require a CUP, that is, a conditional use permit, and planning commission review and approval. The main change would be dropping it back down to six factors rather than seven, of which any two can be common. And what that are is, right now, the ordinance requires that any business that has 11 or more establishments with two or more features among the following six: standardized menu, standardized facade, standardized decor, uniform apparel, standard signage, standard trademark, any of those six, two or more of those six that are shared across 11 establishments, that's the current trigger that would come back into force, were the council to not extend the moratorium. If the moratorium is extended, then those numbers are 11 drops to five, and the factors, six expands to seven, remains two of seven, and that would continue. And the short end, so it would change the rules, but formal business would remain heavily regulated under either approach. It's just more regulated if the moratorium is extended.
Yeah, I have a question, too.
And then a question for the city manager. Since we did this mini-moratorium, have any permit-- have-- since we've-- thank you. Since we've established this mini-moratorium, have any businesses come forward that have exceeded any of the levels that we've set forth now, or any of the previous-- or any of the previous levels? Thank you.
So we have not had a business that met the criteria of a business that would be restricted under the moratorium since we put the moratorium in place. There have been several businesses that we reviewed and made sure that they weren't hitting those criteria, but there have not been any businesses to date that have been prevented because of the moratorium.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Question?
Go ahead, sir.
I'm in favor of extending the moratorium. My only question now is, the number five, that's for the-- that's during the pause, but the planning commission can still-- we can still determine the final number. That's correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And the planning commission, it's currently scheduled for August 18th, so not this meeting this week, but the following. And they did indicate that they plan to take a deep dive. So I think when we talk timeline, they're gonna need a few meetings to come back and make recommendations.
Okay, thank you. So this will allow the planning commission to take that deep dive, this timeframe? Okay.
But still, not forever.
Mayor, I have a-- I have one question for the motion maker.
Yes.
And that would be, Bill, instead of the moratorium, would set it back to five, would you be open to moving it to eight versus the five? One of the issues I had was with this going forward, the last time was, the city attorney actually wrote this. It wasn't coming directly from the planning commission, and I said at that meeting that my fear was is that the planning commission was gonna kick this down the road and it rode and accept the city attorney's verbiage. And that's exactly where we are and what occurred. So would you be open to moving it to eight instead of five?
I'm a little nervous, I have to admit. I think it's more important that we get the four votes to extend it, and if that's the price of doing so, I would prefer to see how the vote goes with five, and if necessary, then try with another number, with another number. That's where I'm at.
So what I heard was a no.
But open. We'll see how the vote goes.
Ryan, any? All right, well, we're ready. We have a motion in a second, so we're ready for the roll call. Vote, please. Gail, wherever you are.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
I'm sorry. Can you start over? What was the first vote?
Councilmember Blatts said yes. Councilmember Francina said yes.
Then I'll say yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Tried to help them.
Okay, well, we have our answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move forward with the planning commission.
Get to work, planning commission.
Thank you, planning commission. All right, moving on to the discussion item, the active transportation program improvements on Maricopa Highway and Ojai Avenue. And just a little background, this is a design meeting to discuss Ojai Avenue, the changes we want to make on Ojai Avenue, what kind of bike path we want on Maricopa Highway, and how the lane reductions are going to work. And as we all know, we all have the same goal. We all want the best for our town. We may have different opinions. We do all agree that safety is the number one concern, and slowing everybody down, whether you're on a, you know, is really the issue. So thank you all for being here, and with that, we will move on to the staff report. James? And James, do you want questions at the very end or during?
I think, so we're gonna kind of break this into a couple of parts. We're gonna go portion by portion, Ojai Avenue, starting from the east end, and then we'll kind of pause after Ojai Avenue and take questions, and then we'll go Maricopa Highway, pause and take questions, and then last will be the right-of-way acquisition approvals. So that's how we would like to structure it.
Sounds great. Thank you.
And then for the benefit of the people listening, after that, we have public comments, right? Okay.
Yes, and just so that you know, we have about 22 public comments at this point, so it'll be two minutes each. Thanks.
Thank you. So we do have a presentation. We have paper copies here, because we'll pull it up on the screen as well, but if anybody's sitting in the further back, we have paper copies here on the stage. We wanted to start just quickly, kind of setting the stage with, this is a long, ongoing project, years in the making, and so we just wanna kind of give some quick background before we move on to talking about the design of each of Ojai Avenue and the Maricopa Highway. And so as we are pulling up our presentation, thank you. Can you go to slide two, please, James? So we wanted to start, just, like I said, this is a years-in-the-making project, so we wanted to start just by kind of updating everybody on the status of the three major components of the project at this time. I know a lot of the conversation is centered around Maricopa Highway and the demonstration, but there's more to the project than that. Ojai Avenue improvements, including curb ramp improvements, pedestrian safety improvements such as flashing beacons or curb extensions, and sidewalk infill throughout many portions of Ojai Avenue are also being designed, and that design is at about 90%. And so one of the main focuses of tonight's meeting is to give council and the public a chance to give feedback on those designs before we move forward and move towards a 95% design in coming months. And so the Ojai Avenue portion is at 90%. We'll walk through that in detail. The Maricopa Highway portion is also at about 90%, but there are two alternate designs based on the last council meeting where we reviewed the ATP, which was May 4th. There were two alternate designs that we were asked to study to determine if they were feasible. So to do that, we prepared those two alternate designs to about 10%, and we'll get into those later, but we call one a class four bike lane design and one a class one bike lane design. One of those, the class four design basically just moves parking off of the street and puts a two-way bike lane in on the Nordoff High School side of the street. The class one design, which is the second alternate we'll go through, actually expands the sidewalk and puts the bicycles on the sidewalk rather than in the street. So those are the two alternates that are at about 10% that we'll also walk through today as well. Lastly, the third key item, which is probably lost in the discussion because it's not a very exciting topic, is for us to complete adding sidewalk, adding curb ramps. We need to acquire several portions of right-of-way. You know, there are parts of the street or the sidewalk now that are currently, because of the way they were designed years and years ago, they are actually on private property. So for us to start fixing some of these things, we'll need to acquire some, several parcels worth of right-of-way. And that is actually, out of everything, the item that we need to make some decisions on today and move forward with, because the timeline for that acquisition is very tight because of the work involved. So as we get towards the end of this presentation, we'll dive into that as well. But so those are the three key components as we move forward on the project. And James, next slide, please. Moving to slide three for people following along, the schedule for the ATP design. I think it's gotten confusing. I think the first timeline we had put together for construction was impacted by COVID, and there's been multiple extensions due to COVID. And so we wanted to really just kind of make the timeline very clear for everybody. The demonstration project, which was originally supposed to be a six-month demonstration, is now entering its ninth month. I think it's next week, it'll be at nine months of the demonstration. We currently are planning to keep it in place until December, which would make it a full-year demonstration. The-- we were able to extend it from its prior date, which it was supposed to be removed in May, to enable to-- to enable us to get data on the Fourth of July events, and also to get more data as school traffic returns, which some Nordoff students had returned to campus in April. So we, if we had ended when we were supposed to, we would have only had one month of data on that, and it was only partial return. We have been in contact with the school district, and we are told that they are supposed to return in person, full-time on August 18th. So we are still planning to be able to get several months' worth of data out of the demonstration project. And so that's the demonstration project. As far as the permanent project, we have tonight on our timeline, because the key item tonight is authorizing the right-of-way engineering, and then designing or identifying any major design modifications to move forward to the 95% design. Then from August, or from basically tomorrow to next August, we'll be doing the right-of-way acquisition and the right-of-way engineering. And then between December of 2021 to March of, or April of 2022, we'll be finalizing that 95% design, and we expect that that 95% design would then come back to the city council in March or April of 2022, depending on exactly what level of modification we choose tonight. And then from April 2022 to October 2022, we'll be awarding the construction contract that has to be awarded by October 2022 and able to, in order to satisfy the grant requirements. And then the plan then would be to start construction shortly thereafter. So when we talk about the whole project, Ojai Avenue and Maricopa, that's the timeline for that project. We want to have just one more kind of piece of background. Next slide, please, James, is grant funding for this project. We have total grant funding right now of about $4.5 million. There's certain other things, like the demo project, we had received some funding for, but for this actual permanent project, we have $4.5 million available for the grant. $3.5 million approximately will be able, is planned for the construction portion. $380,000 is for design, and $680,000 is the right-of-way engineering and acquisition. And so at this point, we are, with the improvements that we'll show tonight and the improvements that were laid out in the packet, we are at budget. It's very tight, but we are, the improvements are very close to what we have available in grant funding for the project. The alternate designs each had their own price tags. One was actually a little less expensive than the current design. One was about the same as the current design, so that could make an impact. But we have the funding available. However, if we do a, if we do end up doing a lot of redesign work, that would ultimately reduce what's available for construction. But we do have adequate funding available as of this time. And so, next slide, please, James. For tonight's discussion, I know I've already kind of gone over this, but tonight's discussion, there's three key issues we want to talk about and get feedback on. One is the Ojai Avenue design up to this point, and particularly, we're looking for feedback on some items. Well, that's the next slide. I'll get to that. The second is the Maricopa Highway portion of the design and the two alternate designs that have been developed to 10%. Third is the right-of-way acquisition approvals needed to move that project forward, that part of the project forward. Next slide, please, James. And so with that, we have Steve Freyson from Alta, who is a, who has been lead on the design of this project from Alta's group, and he will walk us through the design. Before we do do that, I wanted to just quickly note that some of the major items that are currently designed for Ojai Avenue is some of the portions of sidewalk infill is one of the major design elements, curb ramp improvements and/or curb extensions, bike lanes and striping improvements, and then one key area is at Kenyatta, there's several modifications such as curb extensions in a median. And so as we go through the design, those are a couple of the key issues. I wanted to call those out in particular. I think one thing we're looking for feedback on are the curb extensions. There were many, I think there was 28 proposed, and I think what we've heard from the community and the feedback is that there is a preference for flashing beacons when possible, so we wanted to kind of identify that for the city council and see if there is a consensus to go, to look at either one or the other between the flashing beacons and curb extensions. So with that, that's, those are kind of the key things to look for, but with that, Steve Freyson will be kind of walking us through the design from the east end of town moving west.
Thanks, James. Next slide, please. So this is hopefully not too dry and boring. It's going to be a mixture of plan views like this one, as well as photos that hopefully, and renderings, they give you an idea of what it will actually look like when it's constructed. And as James said, we're gonna start from the east end on Ojai Avenue. So this is the stretch from Gridley to Golden West, and in this particular area, we're going to be doing striping and a little bit of sidewalk infill, and you'll hear me mention sidewalk infill at various times. There are gaps in the overall sidewalk structure along Ojai Avenue. The original grant application was intended to provide not only safety for bicyclists, but also for pedestrians by creating connectivity within the sidewalk system. So you'll see that reference to sidewalk infill at various times. Next slide, please. So this is what that reach looks like today from Gridley through to Golden West, and after we implement on-street striping for the bike lane, it would look like. The next slide, please. And so as you can see here in this rendering, there would be a bicycle lane that would allow for parking against the curb, but this is what we would refer to as a class-two bikeway. Next slide, please. So this next stretch is from Golden West through to Shady Lane. This is more sidewalk infill, along with bike lanes and striping improvements. And so, again, the idea here is to take care of the gaps that we have in the system, and this would again be on-street bike lane facilities. Next slide. So from Bryant to Drown, there would be crosswalk improvements, and this is where we start to see some of the more significant improvements. In this reach, we will be, we're planning to provide curb ramp improvements as well as curb extensions. In the process of developing this project, we had quite a bit of collaboration and coordination with Caltrans. Caltrans is also doing work along this corridor, and so the city and Caltrans spent a fair amount of time negotiating over the-- And so the city and Caltrans spent a fair amount of time negotiating over the parsing of who would do which ramps. And so when the dust settled, Caltrans chose to do a number of curb ramps. They left the curb extensions to the city to decide where and if they wanted to implement them. The primary reason for installing curb extensions is to shorten the distance, the crossing distance from one side of the street to the other. There are other means and methods of protecting pedestrians, things like flashing beacons and so on. But the physical distance that pedestrians would have to cross is aided principally by creating curb extensions. And so in this particular reach, that's where we see a number of these proposed. Next slide, please. And so that treatment continues from Bald through Montgomery Street. Again, striping and bike lanes with crosswalk improvements at Bald Street. Again, part of the goal here was to create a safer environment for pedestrians. So there are instances where the plans call for improving or implementing crosswalks that either aren't there today or not up to current standards from a visibility standpoint, both for motorists as well as for those crossing the street. Next slide, please. And so this theme continues from Libby Park over to Blanch. Again, intersection and crosswalk improvements, curb extensions. And I understand that there's concern about how this looks through the arcade area. And I'm going to share with you a couple of photographs that show what it looks like today and how that might look in the future. Next slide, please. So this is a view of the arcade area as it exists today. And this is one location where we have recommended that a curb extension be implemented, as will be seen on the next slide, please. And so as you can see there, more or less in the bottom third of the photograph or the rendering there, we would be looking to implement a curb extension there, again, to shorten the distance in this area for folks crossing the street. Next slide, please. So as we move on to Kenyatta Street, here we are looking to install a median to function as a refuge as well as to create separation between traffic in both directions. It also is a way of flagging the entry into the major downtown core. So there's a sense of arrival for motorists and for folks on foot and on bicycles. Coupled with this is modifications of the little pork chop that's there at Kenyatta to provide a little bit of a softer feel as well as to promote better access for pedestrians. So next slide shows what that looks like today as we're looking westerly. And then in the next slide, it gives you a feel for what that would look like after the improvements are in place. And so as we continue on, I'll show you some more photos here. Ojai Avenue at Rincon. Next slide, please. Thank you. That's what this looks like today. Again, this is an area where we would look to be installing on-street bike lanes, class-two bike lanes, as well as improving the sidewalk experience and environment. And so on the next slide, you can see how that would look once it was constructed with the bicycle lane there in the street and adding a curb area to create a protected sidewalk Next slide, please. Then from Bristol to Country Club Drive, this is again more of the same sidewalk infill and bike lanes. This stretch basically from here out to the Y is characterized as having significant gaps in the sidewalk infrastructure. And also, the street provides enough width in order to be able to construct on-street bike lanes, as you'll see in the following photos. This is what it looks like today. And then next slide, this is what it would look like with an addition of a bike lane in each direction. Next slide, please. So as we continue westerly, Western Country Club Drive, the improvements in this area are pretty much striping. Again, this is to perpetuate the class-two bike lane facility. Next slide, please. So this is Ojai Avenue, east of the Y. This is what it looks like today. This is more of a continuation of the theme. And then, as you can see here, this is what it looks like once the bike lane is installed, again, class-two bike facility. Next slide, please. And then what we have here is Ojai Avenue at Rincon. This is what the sidewalk infill could look like. Again, adjacent to the bike lanes, overall intent here is to provide a safe environment for bike lane for bicyclists and pedestrians. Next slide. And then that takes us towards the Y, which as we approach the Y from the east, again, this is the continuation of the sidewalk infill and on-street striping and class-two bike facilities. So before I move on to the Maricopa section, I'd like to stop and ask if there are any questions from council?
Where do we start? The, you know, on your drawing right there, what do the dark red spaces indicate?
That is, it's tough for me to see. That is a bus stop.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor, do you want to do we want to go through this whole thing from east to west right now or just take the time to ask questions?
Do you have any more questions specifically?
That was the only one I had regarding just what the red was.
Why don't we?
I have tons of comments.
I think, you know, we haven't gotten to get into Ojai Avenue. I know I know Maricopa is the hot topic, but we haven't really gotten to get to this. So any design feedback that we can then take and put into the 95% would be very much appreciated.
I have a couple of questions. From the sidewalk from Soul Golf Course, Soul Park Golf Course to Shady Lane, Shady Gridley, on the on the south side of the street, do we really need that? We have a we have a nice sidewalk on the other side. Very few people walk down there at that point. And, you know, it's a nice dirt path.
Would you repeat if it's from the from where to where?
In front of the golf course.
Uh huh.
To where?
Attachment A, page six.
Thanks, Bill.
So actually, Mayor, that's that's one of the areas that that we looked at. It actually shows a concrete walkway extending from the entrance to the golf course east. And then if you actually drive that space, you'll see that there's a ton of of walking traffic that is actually that utilizes the south side of the 150. One of my suggestions would be get an alternative bid to have that placed in decomposed granite. It already has a curb, it already has a gutter, and it's already in use. So it seems like tying that east to west on the south side of the boulevard would be beneficial to the public.
And decomposed granite, much better for the joints.
Yeah.
Well, and cheaper than concrete. And like you said, the biggest expense in curb and gutter in any sidewalk is the actual curb and gutter. But DG would fit right into it to what we would want for our community, for a permeable surface, as well as a surface that can take traffic, as well as a surface that's easy to maintain.
I strongly support that. I was really pleased to see in the photographs, it looked like some of the sidewalks were, what do you call that, DG, decomposed granite? So wherever feasible, I would like to see that instead of more cement. It'll be cooler, too. So shall I save comments for later or just questions now?
I was going to suggest maybe we have comments per page.
Okay.
And then go through pages. Because I have a comment on this page.
Okay.
That's, is that all right? No. I'd also like to raise, I'm going to be making a number of comments as we go through these pages that really come down to value engineering. And I might give one example. In front of the hotel, you'll notice we've got a sidewalk in front of that hotel. The priority, of course, is that dirt area. I'm talking about the top, the top one. And if you go out and see, as some of us have, what's involved in that sidewalk in front of the hotel, it is totally developed already in terms of landscaping, other obstructions. And in terms of cost effectiveness, you already have, I know it's not quote-unquote proper, but you already have a walking area there in terms of asphalt surface, but you're talking about a very expensive piece of sidewalk there to add in front of the hotel when I think other areas are more a priority, especially the area along Ojai Avenue just to the west of that. So that's just a comment where I think sometimes it's easy to draw things without really looking at the cost efficiency aspect of it.
It's the Capri Hotel is what we're referring to.
That was an ugly look. That was an ugly glare.
I'm sorry. You're right, the pages are handwritten here that we have on the desk.
And thank you all for your patience because clearly this is the first time we've done this here, so.
All right. Just a comment that we need to look at cost effectiveness here and what we're accomplishing. And it's a lot of mature landscaping in that stretch that would be all torn out by this proposal.
So again, getting back to this space, though, so we're looking at DG on the south side and on the north side, leave the Capri parking lot and the asphalt that's existing, and then attach a curb and gutter and a drain system on that vacant lot going east to west to the next hotel system and heading to Shady Lane.
Anything else on this page? Can you move to attachment A, page five?
Yeah, well, give me one second. We're going to move to the attachments rather than the PowerPoint so that everybody can refer to the same page, although.
Thank you, James.
Mm-hmm.
To Drown, too. Bald and Montgomery and then Park, Drown.
Yeah, I'll have to look at it in the real world.
The next section of Ojai will be approximately Bald Street to Drown Street. That's attachment A, page five.
So are we going over the items? Page three, four, and five? So a question for Alta, can I ask a question at this moment? How do you decide, you know, the curb extension has the benefit for the pedestrian, but the drawback is that it kicks the cyclist closer to the cars. So you have to weigh those two. So how do you, any thoughts on that?
I think you said it perfectly. We have to balance the needs of both of those groups of folks. And so it tends to be just that, it's a balance. And so the bicycle pathway, the thing that you can take away from this design is that it's more or less linear. It doesn't jog back and forth in and out, so a bicyclist can expect to continue on in a normal pathway. Also, at the end of the day, the pedestrians are the most vulnerable users within the roadway area. And so they, at least from our perspective, take precedence over bicyclists and motorized vehicles.
Yes, I agree with that. The paradigm is pedestrians, cyclists, cars.
I might have a different paradigm than that, but I'm not going to disagree.
As far as vulnerability.
But let's go but let's go this way. If we're looking at at money and we're looking at pedestrian safety, I would think that flashing flashing beacons and giving citizens an opportunity to actually slow or stop traffic is more important than having the ability to walk two feet into the street and still take your life in your own hands. So so my suggestion would be to not have any curb extensions unless absolutely necessary. Take that, take that money as it benefits us and put more more of the flashing beacons in. And I think the cost is almost the same. So we could actually have, again, have engineering come back and give us a, instead of, again, curb extension, just put beacons in and then see what those costs come back at. But I think this, I think the, I think that's a, watch, we all know what curb extensions do to people my age driving cars. I won't speak for you, I'll speak for me, but they're an obstacle. So let's remove that.
Thank you, Randy. And I totally agree. It's all about, let's get flashing lights as soon as we can.
I could just add to that because Randy and I actually have talked about this a good bit. And I appreciate staff having the opportunity for us to take a do an early morning personal inspection. And it did seem like a couple of things were, and I know there's some division of labor here between Caltrans and and the city. But it didn't make sense to Randy and I when you look at some of these curb extensions that create an ADA path of travel one way across the street, but then the the other side is still completely out of compliance with ADA. So it seems to me the priority should be getting your, that's the great safety you have is in terms of creating the proper path of travels and not necessarily just through curb extensions. The other thing I want to point out that bothered me, and we talked about that on our morning tour, was if you look at the area of Drown, South Fulton, and North Fulton, you've got three very developed areas there when you kind of wonder if one would do in terms of creating a safe path of travel across the street. So I'm worried about the the danger to bicycles. I agree with Randy in terms of the cost effectiveness issue. We looked at some of these curb extension issues. Some of them look like they involve moving far hydrants and things, which is incredibly expensive. And I think we're just going to have to really do some careful value engineering of looking at the beacons as well as proper reflection design at night because our most our greatest danger is at night. And we really also need to look at, on top of the flashing beacons and reflection in the street, we also need to look at how to light up, how to get the proper light downlighting on these crossings. Because everybody in this town has had that experience of somebody in dark clothing crossing at night without that lighting, and it just it scares the heck out of you. So anyway, those are my thoughts. I'd rather put our money into that, in other words.
If you'd like to make a public comment, okay.
And can we note for the public, I think, just to kind of note so everybody could follow along, is we're on the Bryant to Drown section. I know you're talking big picture, but the the area that you were focused on is the Bryant to Drown section that's identified in the PowerPoint on on page three, I believe it is.
So are we going with staff, the staff recommendation so far when it says option?
Well, I think what we're looking for is feedback, and we're getting it. I think we had questions, you know, when this was originally designed, we had, the city had put a big focus on adding curb extensions where possible. We had heard from the community and from the council that we wanted to be a little more selective about where we added those. So that's kind of one of the key issues, more than, I think, more than specific corners is, you know, is the feedback of, you know, do we want to start swapping those out for rapid or for beacons as possible, for lighting as possible? One point that council member.
Reflections in the street.
Yep, yeah, the reflectors. One point council member Wirick raised, which is is true, but it's not completely determinative is is whatever plan we come up with, we then have to get Caltrans to approve it. And so they may come back and say, this intersection absolutely needs this thing. We could then, but what we're looking for is the feedback. We could then, but what we're looking for is the feedback of what to kind of go through that process, what to take through that approval process. And then if we do run into an obstacle where Caltrans says that there's a critical need somewhere, we'll come, we'll bring that back with the 95% design, so.
Wouldn't proper separation of bike traffic and auto traffic be an important issue?
Yep.
Some of these curb extensions really cause an issue with that.
Yep, yep. I think that's the case we would make, you know, the key kind of tenets, which Steve Fryson had alluded to is, you know, bicycle, improving bicycle safety, pedestrian safety and vehicle safety. And I think we could make the argument, especially in key places, swapping over to lighting and reflectors and beacons is, helps to do that safely, so.
Randy?
Yeah, thank you.
And, you know, and the final thing is, we're designing this for our community. So I would think that our needs and our concerns and our wants are greater than theirs. So if push comes to shove, James, I hope you push.
Yeah. And, you know, we've had those conversations recently. I do think Caltrans is going, has been good about giving the city deference here, so we'll work with them through that.
Thank you. Anything else on this page? Page five?
Are we on page four still?
We're on page five now. We can go on to page four.
Can I ask a question about, on page two?
Well, let's, can we go to page four first and then we'll get back? Do you think, questions on page four?
I just did on my comments.
Yeah. I think they all have the same thing there that they all have about removing the extensions, lighting the crosswalks better or providing better lighting.
And also the Kenyatta, I have a comment on. Randy, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I did want to let you go by. Go ahead.
But yeah, you know, James, as far as lighting, I think there's somewhere in here about we're going to be more consistent with the light standards and the light fixtures. Is that the goal of the downtown corridor of the page that we're on right now?
Yeah, so right now, and it's funny, it's, you know, a lot of people probably go through Ojai Avenue and don't notice it, but once you notice it, it does kind of, you know, it stands out that right now we have mismatched lighting throughout the Ojai Avenue. There's some that are acorn style that look like an acorn. There's some that are carousel style. There's some that are those new halogen light, yeah, Cobra style is what it's called. And so part of this project, because Ojai Avenue is, you know, the kind of the heart of town is to make that consistent and make all of them look the same and nice because some of them right now don't look very nice. So that's part of the project that we're proposing as well.
You have a comment about Kenyatta?
Yes, I do. Looking at the top part of the strip there, page 59 of 75, attachment A, page four. That really pushes the bikes out in the traffic lane.
Are you looking at the Kenyatta portion for the public? So on the PowerPoint slides, it's the page that says Kenyatta Street Medium on page four.
I'm sorry?
Just for the public, it's the slide that says Kenyatta Street Medium.
To me, there's a real issue of pushing that. That whole, that whole area there really pushes the bikes out, I think inordinately, without, I don't see any real advantage in terms of pedestrian safety. I really think that needs to be looked at in terms of how that could be designed to keep, to allow the bikes to be further away from cars, that that's a critically important intersection. And I want to point out that it's, we're not, it doesn't show closing El Paso Road, so that's a one-way. People still fly into that one-way there. It looks like they still could and the bikes are being pushed out close to cars there. I think redesigning that would allow much better bike separation at that particular corner by making it a less radical protrusion, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. It seems like a lot of building right there. You don't need that much.
Along with right-of-way acquisition that maybe we could avoid by a redesign.
Question on, it's on page five, actually, of Alta. I just, I want to make sure that I'm understanding that there is going to be a second crosswalk in front of the mob shop so that people don't have to cross three times if they're coming down North Ventura, then they have to zigzag over, cross over to the library, zigzag over to Westridge, just three crossings. And the one around Westridge, there's a lot of people turning right. So there is a crosswalk and it's going to have, or can you verify that there is a crosswalk and that there's, then the lighting, how does that work? Just like on Signal Street where the crosswalk, where the lighting is synchronized, correct? Is that clear what I'm saying?
It's, the, well, we have some ability to design the lighting the way we want it, but I think the, when we start to kind of convert some of these curb extensions to lighting, I think a lot of them will be the type of lighting that's already installed where, at pretty much the location you mentioned, you just push the button and it, you know, and it flashes for a set period of time. I think that is reflected, that portion you asked about is reflected, I was trying to, it's on page four of attachment A, I'm trying to find the slide for the public as well.
So.
Page four on slide, oh wait, what is it?
So Suzie, can I get it?
It's the part of the slide labeled Libby Park to Blanche Street and it shows, yes, crosswalks added at each of those intersections.
So I guess I need to clarify, so there's three, there's three crosswalks, are you asking for a fourth?
Yeah, well.
Is that what I'm hearing?
So that there's.
So you want a crosswalk on the west side of Blanche, am I correct?
No, this is North Ventura.
No, she's talking, she's talking about Ventura, but I'll tell you, Randy, I want one on my corner.
The corner where the mob shop is?
I think all three of those intersections should be four-way crosses.
What already is a crosswalk fourways there?
It's not on, it's not on Blanche.
And not on North, and not on North Ventura.
And it's not currently on Ventura either.
Yeah, it should be, there should be.
On our plans, there is not one on Blanche.
Yeah, so the one that's not a four-way is North Blanche, or is, I'm sorry.
Apparently there's not a four-way on Ventura.
So Suzie, are you asking for another crosswalk in front of the mob shop?
Yes, absolutely, because there's so many bicycles going down North Ventura and then you see them, some of them are brave enough to try to cross, but most people, including myself, we have to zigzag over, then we have to wait, press the button, we have to get off the bike to press the button, then you, it actually takes me longer to cross Ojai Avenue than it does if I had to go all the way to City Hall because each one is like, you know, a few minutes. And it doesn't, you know, it's not, it's not a big deal, but if we're going to be truly bicycle friendly, that's what you want to do so that people are, can very conveniently, especially families, they can go right across without having to cross. If they're going to Westridge Market, they shouldn't have, for example, they should not have to cross three times. They should only have to cross ones.
Okay.
You get it?
No.
Okay.
Does the other, did the other bicycle guy in town want something special too?
No, no, no.
Going to his business, I'm lost.
Randy, let me say like this.
It has nothing to do with the business. It has to do.
What does that have to do with it?
It has to do, when you get to the corner of North Ventura, you're on the right side of the street. In order to cross this, there's no crosswalk to get across. There is no crosswalk currently.
On North Ventura, the proposed design is to add, is to have a four-way crosswalk.
Yeah, I just wanted that verified.
Yeah.
I thought you wanted one in the middle next to cross from the mob shop, but there is in our picture, there is a four-way in there.
Yes.
That's what you're asking for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, yes, it's clearly on, it's not currently there in real life. It's on the design for the west side of South to North Ventura Street. And I think Blanche ought to have one too because that's where the major, that's your cross from Westridge and next to the shopping center that includes Jim Robbs and a lot of other commercial activity there. All of those seem like they're better off. And it's not just trying to make it more convenient for bicycles. It means that if you don't have to cross twice, you have half the danger. You don't have to cross horizontally at night, you don't have to cross, you know, all the other times where there's people turning right, you can go straight across. If we can get blinkers on those, which some of them already have. The only thing that's hard with this is that it doesn't show any of the crosswalks that actually currently already have the beacons. I'm not seeing any, unless I'm missing something. I know there's some of these, especially on the prior pages, I think down at Park and further down in front of Whispering Oaks, they already have that. So I want to make sure that we're getting the right budgetary amount to look at these beacons, see what we can do on some of these, because I know the one on Blanche, right there on the east of Blanche has one. And I don't think there's one on any of the Ventura, or I think there's one on Ventura Street in front of the library, but since we can't tell on here unless I, not seeing the marking.
Ryan, we asked the same question. The RF, our, what is it, RRFB?
Yes.
Yes, the Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons.
That's what they are. So those are called out for on these.
All right, it says optional though, where it already exists. So I don't know what the option is for and it doesn't indicate that it already exists.
Yeah, if it's showing, if it, the intent was if it's showing that it's optional to add the RRFB that they do not currently exist there, but.
There is one on Blanche.
Yeah, I was going to say there is, we may have.
And there is one on Ventura and I've been trying to figure it out for the last 10 minutes, but either way, we want to, I mean, I think there's, from getting a feel for things, there seems to be a bit of a consensus for trying to save some money on some expansion on the, on the sidewalk, on the curb extensions and going with flashing beacons, but I don't know exactly, you know, I don't know if we need them on the horizontal streets, but definitely the ones that cross Ojai Avenue, I don't think we'd be talking about them on, on the side streets.
Yeah, crossing Ojai Avenue is what we, what we were thinking.
Yeah. Now, is there any, now it's 5500, it looks like, this other one's 275. Why is it half the cost? Because in that one, it should be, there's already one on Ventura. Is it cheaper because there's already one or was it, is there some other reason why we're not getting the same price? And you go down to like mid-block north, that would be 9,000?
I think one's solar, Ryan, and one is tied into the, if it has to be put in, it has to go through the electrical power system, the existing power lines that we have.
I think it's actually just, we split that into Ventura, North Ventura, South and it's, if you look, those two add up to the same prices.
That's kind of tricky.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even though there's one already there. All right, now you're confusing the heck out of it. All right. Well, I, I mean, I completely agree though. I think that all three of these though, these, these particular three intersections, Signal, Ventura and Blanche being the main corridor, there's no reason to be missing the crosswalk on the east side.
Right.
And I'd support beacons on all, all of the ones crossing Ojai Avenue. And I think when we go east, there's more of a question, but I think we got to go back and review that because if there is a consensus for it, we got to make sure we're looking at which ones, because we may not need one on every street, but we got to make sure we know which ones already have one so we can figure out how they're spaced out appropriately.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Another comment very quickly is the very much needed barrier, delineation there at Kenyatta and Ojai Avenue where you, you know, we have the, I don't know what you, the right term of it is, but the interior curbing there. I think the issue that's, that came up in our discussion the other morning was that that can get very gridlocked both directions and we need to be able to get emergency vehicles through there, which means it may need to be a rollover curb rather than a sharp 90-degree.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Malleable curb.
Noted, thank you.
Yep. Noted.
And Mayor, also that island that is coming off of Kenyatta, if everyone can see it on, that island is actually a landscaped island. I don't know if we showed that in the picture, did we, James?
I think in the, in the picture in the slide, it showed the landscaping, but. I'm sorry, it's, on the slideshow, we show a rendering with the landscaping. On the plans, it's higher level, so it doesn't show the landscaping.
Right, so we're looking at rolled, a rolled curb and any planting to be probably nothing taller than three feet. We're, I know originally we had thought about putting trees in there and some type of marquee saying welcome to Ojai, but I'm not, I'm not sure if we're still thinking that way.
Yeah, we removed the tree. We removed the trees, so. And I think with, with that point, if we're focusing, which we should, on the emergency vehicle access, then we'll, we'll plan to scale that back.
That's so nice.
Well, I think that if we considered reducing the extension on the El Paso Kenyatta section, back to where the crosswalks are kind of looking, it would still prevent it from being a straight shot that we were kind of trying to avoid the way it currently is, that it's awkward where you can't really tell if somebody's turning right, but it'll also push the bike lane a little further inside and also add a lot of space for vehicles to traverse there. And we also, we can also get rid of the curb extension on the other side of Kenyatta. But it seems like that might be an option to shave off some of that and push the bike lane a little bit over. It's not going to cause so much of a curve to be dangerous, I don't think.
You know, Ryan, I also, and Mayor, I also think the reason we did that, originally, I know I was, one of the, one of the council people had asked to have that extended pretty far out because we wanted to slow that direct line from the 150 into El Paso. So even if it's a bump out, something that's just going to slow that through traffic down is what.
Yeah, I completely agree with that. I mean, I don't think there's any way, I think we got to make sure that that's not a straight line. But the way it currently is, you're going to cause a situation where a bicyclist is coming down this road, looking into Kenyatta to avoid vehicles and then suddenly having to look left, miss the curb and having somebody coming directly over their left shoulder to potentially turn into El Paso. And that is a very difficult situation as well as avoiding someone turning right from there, from Kenyatta. That's, car's kind of coming at you both ways. If we push that back a little bit, then they'll kind of be mostly looking out of their left, but we can avoid that being a direct straight angle into El Paso, which has been the difficulty. But if we're going to put a bike lane there and try and, I think, make it a little safer, that does look like a, it does not look like a friendly space to be riding your bike and trying to keep your head on a, have your head on a platter.
So maybe this is for Alta. So as we, as we look at this and we're coming west to east and we have the bike lane in it, it's coming up, it looks like, just all of a sudden, the bike lane just ends. So we're heading downhill, we cross the street and then we stop and then I guess we continue the bike lane, is that what I'm seeing on the other side of the curve?
Right.
So we're taking people down the 150 and on bikes and then all of a sudden we say you're on your own? Is that what I'm seeing?
Well, I think there's sharos. There's sharos. Randy, it does, it does stop being bike lane and becomes being sharos when you get kind of further down to downtown. That's right. And, and I wouldn't have a problem if we stopped that at Ventura because once you get to signal with the bike lane, it does get a little, little more confusing, especially during that, in that area, but the, there are, there have been sharos on it forever, which I, I know Susan and I have spoke about this, the, riding your bike through that area between Signal Street and about Montgomery on the road with all the cars parallel parked is not a, really, it's kind of an adventurous idea.
Yeah.
But it's still legal and it's still got to, you know, we got to give them something, but not having a dedicated bike lane, well at least, you know, people I've spoke to, so well, that, that should indicate to some bike riders that it's not necessarily a path, it's more of an option, but you need to know that you're sharing the road versus having a dedicated bike lane. But I, I wouldn't recommend anybody riding that, especially on a busy weekend. I can tell you, I've ridden my bike in this town for 35 years. I've never ridden my bike on Ojai Avenue unless it's the middle of the night between Signal and Montgomery ever. But, but having sharos there, I don't think is the end of the, plus there's going to be some bicyclists or more professional oriented on their road bikes who might want to do that and they might be okay, but I would also be open to the idea of maybe stopping it and turning it just into sharos after Ventura, because after that, it gets really significantly more dangerous on the road.
May I comment, Mayor, about that? Ryan, you're right, only the brave ride Ojai Avenue. I ride, I ride Ojai Avenue because I've done it all my life, but I wouldn't probably do it if I was just starting out. But what we're going to have, let us be clear, it's not ideal. In an ideal world, we would absolutely remove the parking between the Arcade and Libby Park and make that a protected bike lane because that's going to be your busy pedestrian area, but the merchants aren't ready for that. So we're compromising with sharos. I'm fine with that because traffic is fairly slow through that, but we have to, we have to recognize that families, kids will most likely continue riding on the sidewalk. Some will walk, which is what I would do if I was, had my kids with me, I would walk it. But that area is going to be very busy, congested. It is already because people will, whole families ride their bike, you know, you'll see them, especially on the weekend, they'll cross Signal, they'll, they'll stay on their bike. There are oftentimes more people on bikes than there are pedestrians and then they keep riding on the sidewalk. That's what will continue to happen until we fix that. So the sharos are, in my, to my way of thinking, a temporary solution until we can provide alternate parking, some off-street parking. It's a, it's a compromise and I'm willing, I'm willing to make that right now. What? What? Oh, is somebody wanting to know what charos are? Oh, you'll see this in Ventura, uh, it's a, it, they're, um.
They're also on Grand Avenue.
Yeah, the, and the ones on Grand Avenue are, are really not correct, and they're, and they shouldn't even be there, that's a whole other subject. But they will, um, they usually are accompanied by share the road signs, a sign that says bikes may use full lane. If we're gonna have charos, we should have signage that says that. And then the charos, instead of being on the side, if you, in Ventura, they're in the middle of the street, and they're huge, they're like a green block with an, with a bicycle, um, you know, stamped, uh, uh, what do you call it? Bicycle? No, what's the word? Not an emblem.
A sign.
A sign, yeah. It's clear that bicycles can use the road, and that cars, if they don't like it, they shouldn't honk at them. It's, it's, it's a way of, it, you know, it, it shows that it's a shared road, charos. Is that clear?
You know, when I first heard it, I thought it was something you did when you, um, were dirty, that you took a charo, but, um, no, it's a very interesting term, so, uh, but it is, it's an appropriate, uh, way to designate a shared road between people riding bikes and people driving cars.
Yeah, and, and when we do them, I want to do them like in Ventura, where it's really obvious, it's not a faded charo, it's a, a clear mark, marking.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to page three? Um, actually, page six, I call it.
So page three takes us all the way up to, uh, North Blanch, that's what I, that's all I have.
North Blanch, um, would this have?
You know what, Madam Mayor, I'd like to suggest something, as I, as I got a nod from Sir Wierke over here, I might be correct. I think we're gonna have a hard time remembering everything, we're gonna go back through and all these things we've talked about, and it may be kind of difficult, I, I have, uh, at least up to page four, although there, I do want to, I do want to finalize the discussion regarding some on, uh, page five, on some of these cross-sections, uh, crosswalks where we think there might be beacons, but should we maybe vote on moving forward on some of this and see what we can, and then, then get a kind of a, a map of where we're at math-wise and budget-wise, if we're gonna make these changes, so we can see if there's things we need to cut on the rest, or how do you, how does everyone else feel about doing that, and then, then going, before we get too far ahead?
Good idea. I have one more question about a sidewalk, it's the, um, it's from Country Club to the Y on the south side, there's one, and I lived in, on El Paso and, uh, Ojai Avenue for nine years when my kids were little, so I did a lot of biking and walking in that area, and generally, the Matilla House side, people walk, use that sidewalk, I'm, I don't think I've ever seen anybody walk on the other side, because, and the bicycle trail, of course, is a block off, so do we really need a sidewalk on that side? Do we need that expense?
Well, may, maybe they're not walking there because there's no sidewalk.
There's a really nice sidewalk on the other side of the street, you know, and, and the kids, for example, from OBS, they go around, they walk to Bonds. I don't, you know, I.
I'm talking about where the Rancho Motel is.
From farther down, from the Y, all the way to Country Club.
Okay, there's already what I would call a natural sidewalk.
Right.
Instead of Boku.
I mean, do we need a concrete sidewalk there?
I would say we should just make sure that the entire, that side of the street is walkable.
There's also a line of oak trees there with a drip line.
Yeah.
So we have to preserve that.
But, but, like in front of Boku, it's walkable, and it's filled with trees and some kind of hard, semi-hard surface.
Because in this plan, there's a sidewalk, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and the current design, there's a sidewalk, and that could be, we were just talking about, that could be one of the areas, if the general consensus is go DG where we can.
At least, yeah, certainly do not remove oak trees for a hard surface.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we're just talking about west of Country Club, though, correct?
Right. It's the section, I think it's Bristol to Country Club is, is the section.
Well, she was saying Country Club to the Y, so Bristol to Country Club on here has this, I, whatever, is that, is that sidewalk, or is that DG?
Sidewalk. Sidewalk, currently, in the current design.
But Mayor was saying was that from Country Club to the Y.
Right.
Which I don't see any sidewalks, I'm not sure.
There, there's no official sidewalk, but you can, there's lots of areas where you can safely walk. And then, I, I, what I'm, what I'm saying is that let's make sure that that en- entire s- south side of Ojai Avenue is walkable, and avoid cement, but use, um, DG where poss- you know, and, and not, you know, make sure that people can walk around trees or whatever, but just make sure it's safe.
But beginning on Country Club Drive, that makes sense to have that hard surface. Country Drive to Bristol and.
From the Y intersection, all the way into town.
That makes sense there, right.
Well, how, how about, I mean, we, we had this very lengthy stretch from Country Club all the way past the winery, all the way down to the Y, where there's not really any crosswalks.
Right.
And, and it's, there's no entrances to the schools there, but there's still potential people who would like to cross there, maybe we at least consider putting in a crosswalk somewhere in that long straight stretch.
I'm all for that, if we can do it.
It is very hard to cross there.
Yeah.
In front of El Paso.
Yeah, you just can't, I mean, you have to go all the way down, usually have to go all the way down to Country Club, or you gotta go all the way down to the Y, I mean, there's nowhere really in between.
Or run fast.
Where, where was that, that you suggested a crosswalk?
Come at El Paso.
Okay.
Somewhere between Country Club and the Y, but if you look where the winery is and the, uh, the schools across the street.
Yeah.
There's no crosswalks on that long straightaway.
Wouldn't the logical place be where Ojai Valley School intersection is, you know, in front of Boku?
Yeah.
That would be really, because I've seen a lot of kids, they go on the wrong side of the street on their bike on the sidewalk, so they don't have to cross.
Yeah, that'd be good, and then you can get the bike trail.
Yeah, closer to El Paso makes a lot of sense, and maybe, I, you know.
Right.
It is kind of a trapped area to try and get across.
That would be a crossing area.
Well, Mayor, I, I think the trap there is the, uh, the trap is the, is the way it's utilized right now, is the fact that all those businesses that line that street don't necessarily have any parking delineated for them. Um, so what you have is when they have events, they have everyone lined up on the street, so anyone that's walking west to east can't walk unless they walk into the street. So I think it's, it's, um, pretty clear that that's a, that's a safety issue, along with people riding bikes.
I think we're all okay with from Country Club towards Bristol.
Right.
Okay, any other questions or comments on Ojai Avenue?
Um, Mayor, before we vote, I, I don't know, I, I imagine most of the speaker cards are for the 33, but maybe we would like to take some public comments, if anyone has any, on the 150 from Gridley to the Y, and let them come up one at a time, and, um, if that's all right with you.
Good idea. Anyone specifically talking about Ojai Avenue? Okay, Cindy?
Hi, Cindy Conroy, Ojai. First of all, I'd love to have these meetings here from May till October, I think it brings in a lot of people, so thank you for this. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we separate all these agenda items into different items so that we can discuss them at length, I think this is way too much for one agenda, that's just, it's, it's too dangerous, people's livelihoods and safety are at stake, you know, a lot of people ended up in the hospital on Maricopa Highway, and one of them's sitting right over there. Um, but to speak to what we're talking about this second, are, I'm tight, thinking about crosswalks, I think we should all have a field trip to Santa Paula to look at the lighted crosswalks, they're in the road all the way across, little white lights, which means at night, you can see someone in the middle of the crosswalk in the dark. The flashing lights on the sides are almost a distraction when there's a lot of traffic, and you're looking forward focused on traffic. The flashing lights are like, is there somebody having a party, is there an outdoor restaurant, is it the Topa Brewery? But when the lights go all the way across, it's very clear that someone is crossing the street day or night, which means Nancy Rub would still be alive, Eugenia Bosnick's singer's mother would still be alive, the people that step out when they think they're safe because there are flashing lights on the side, and as people, sorry, I didn't mean to go on on this, but as people pass Bryant Street and pull out of town much faster than they should, they don't see the flashing lights on the side, and people who push the button on the crosswalk, the pedestrians, think they're safe. I've almost hit somebody out there, because they just march out into the street thinking that those lights are gonna save them. Um, and that's what I have to say about the crosswalks, but please think about dividing these agenda items down, it's just too much to focus on in one meeting, and it's dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
So Mayor.
Any other comments?
Just, just one thing to Cindy's comment, I think what we need to do is we need to value engineer that, because I do agree with her, that, that that is probably a more efficient and safer way to allow a pedestrian across the street. We need to, um, find out what the difference in costs.
It's, it's like a hundred thousand dollars each.
Yeah, and also the longevity of these, that's one of the reasons they've gone to flashing, is the fact that they're putting all this money into actually hard-lined, um, or hard-lighting lines in your crosswalks, and they're not durable, they're not staying up. So that's, that's a factor.
How much, how much more expensive are the ones that are embedded in the street than the ones that are just flashing on the side? Do we have an estimate for that? Because when we asked Greg this back in the day, it was like a hundred thousand per crosswalk or something like that.
Yeah.
And these are only like five grand.
Yeah, Steve, uh, do you have any idea?
Yeah, I don't have a number off the top of my head.
So that's something they can bring back to us.
We can bring that back.
It's a good idea.
Any other public comments just on Ojai Avenue? Do you want?
On, uh, on where Kenyatta comes in.
Will you tell me your name?
Anita Hendricks.
Hi, Anita.
Hello. If you're coming down Ojai Avenue toward town, and there's that abrupt turn at Kenyatta, I think there ought to be some kind of a traffic, uh, warning or something that, you know, slow down, reduce your miles per hour, or whatever it is, at Kenyatta, when I try to cross there, it's very scary, wondering if some car is gonna come whipping around the corner, not expecting such a quick slowdown, so I would think there should be something, whether it's a sign or whatever, that would warn people to slow down. Uh, I love the idea of no lights in Ojai and trying to save the critters from, you know, nightlights, but I think the downtown, main downtown, block downtown, I, I agree, people can get hit, it's just, you can't, people do not know that if they're wearing dark colors, you can't see them. So I think it's very important to do something for people who, one time I was trying to get around Ojai Avenue and go down Montgomery, some car just pulled right in front of me, I don't know if there were so many cars there, they, they just pulled right in front of me within that far, and I had to put my hand like this to stop the woman next to me, we almost got hit. Um, let's see what else they have. I, I guess two, two of the intersections that are most concerned to me is, is that Montgomery-Ojai Avenue section, because there's so many cars congested there, it's really hard to see in that area, and then again, as I said, Kenyatta, so thank you, and I hope that we can get to the Maricopa sections.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you, and, and I'll just note quickly that we have applied to Caltrans to add a speed advisory sign at Kenyatta.
Get one more here.
Okay, one more? Yep. Thank you.
Two more.
Hi, my name is Ilana Daly, and I live here locally, I actually prepared something for Maricopa Highway, but in listening to you guys, um, does it work better if I speak right into it? Okay, so, um, my son rides his bicycle along with carrying his golf clubs from Topa Topa School, which is where we live, to Soul Park, where he plays golf, and he plays there every day, and I love that it's a mile there and a mile home, and I love that Soul Park is so close and he can play golf, get his exercise, come home and relax. There is an intersection there that he uses, um, over, it's between Shady and Bryant, it is lit up, um, it's near the automotive shop, but it's not on the Shady corner, it's just a little bit, so he takes Shady Lane, hangs a right, gets to that crosswalk, crosses, moves over, and then heads up into Soul Park. Um, I also would like an opportunity to speak to the Maricopa when we get to that. So my recommendations at this point, um, are no bike lanes through town, we have bike lanes right behind you, and they go all along the road. And here's, here's why, okay, because I have a lot of friends who cycle, my husband cycles, he does hundred-mile rides, we have a friend of ours who is trying to move back to Ojai, and he comes up on the weekend and rides his bike all through Ojai looking for houses, right? So I'm in favor of, of cyclists. Um, I also run on the east end, and going through town, there's not enough room, there is just not enough room, so if we can take a look at, instead of putting bike lanes through town, maybe diverting them, whether it's Grand Avenue or right back here, and improving what we have, and then improving the thoroughfares that get them to downtown, because there are signs in the arcade that say, "Walk your bikes, walk your skateboards," because we want our, our people who come and spend time in Ojai, that's our bread and butter in this town, right? So if we want them to come and spend time here in Ojai and enjoy downtown Ojai, and they have to dodge bicycles, whether they're driving or they're walking, I'm not sure that's such a safe idea for anybody, whether it's a merchant, or it's a pedestrian, or it's a skateboarder, or it's a cyclist, or it's a driver. But if we take and maximize these, and then build something along the side roads to encourage, that's a better use of our funds, so that's one thing I wanted to say. Um, and then maintain the no bike riding, no skateboards through the arcade, zero curb extensions, I know you guys have talked about it for years, I mean, I haven't, you know, I've lived here almost 20 years, and we've had curb extensions over by the farmer's market, they didn't work so well. So I'm not sure that that's such a good idea, and it gives me relief to hear you guys saying, "Nix the curb extensions," right? Because I don't want to trip over them when I'm walking. Um, zero planner boxes in the median, I love it, it's beautiful, right? It is, it really looks nice, but it eliminates space in the road, and God forbid, and I will address that in more detail on Maricopa Highway, having had a personal experience, God forbid, that an emergency vehicle needs to get through that road, we've already had fires, we've already had floods, what about all the traffic that occurred when everybody was trying to get out of town during the evacuation, during the fires? The roads were backed up all over, okay? So I don't want to jeopardize the nightlights, I'm, I'm in agreement that we need to keep, you know, Ojai dark, great. Um, and that's everything for the Ojai Road. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Kathy Nolan?
Kathy Nolan, planning commissioner, uh, I have more to say later, but I just wanted to make a quick comment about the, um, Ojai Avenue portion. Um, I would consider looking at curb extensions, the rapid flashing beacons, and possible, and the lighting in the streets, depending on the intersection, the width of the street, and the application, and what's going on, so I wouldn't throw out one of those, or any of them, because one may be more appropriate than the other depending on the application. So, and I do know that cost is a big, huge portion, I wouldn't throw that out at all, but I would consider that when you go, when you're looking at this area, because some places you may want to shorten and, and be able to see the person coming out, for instance, like right in the middle of the arcade, because we have park, a lot of parking, and the arcade section of Ojai Avenue is more narrow in width than the rest of it, and that's the main reason why there are only charos and not a bike lane there. So just, I would consider that, and I'll get up again for the other, other portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any more on Ojai Avenue, we have one more. Russell?
We get more exercise here. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, with regards to Ojai Avenue, I, I support all the things that you have put forward, especially the part about dealing with Kenyatta, uh, and Ventura Avenue. Uh, one of the things that the Ojai Bicycle Safety Team, uh, is working to create is exactly what the woman with the laptop asked for, which is safe ways to get. is safe ways to get from the Ojai Valley Trail across Ojai Avenue so that people can get from all the north side to the south side, to the trail and everything that connects it. So that's really important. And the other place where we're looking at that is on the east side of town, which is really challenging because there's no straight across connections. And the most viable option there is from South Fulton to Drown because you have the shortest distance and the least amount of conflicting uses there. And in order to be able to go from South Fulton up, you need a good enhanced crossing for South Fulton, but then you also need to come the other way, which was not mentioned in the discussion, where there needs to be enhancements on the Drown side that goes across the Ojai Beverage Company and lets you get to South Fulton. That would then give you the strong connection that they were asking for from the trail up into the west side, north of Ojai Avenue. I also think you need to look at the bang for your buck on the sidewalk infill that is between Shady Lane and Golden West because there is two properties that are looking at over $300,000 for that sidewalk infill and the whole bicycle budget is barely $500,000. So that's a concern. I don't know if you're going to do with it now or later. Thank you so much.
Quick question Russell. On Drown, there is a, on the plan, there is a crosswalk going from north Drown to south.
Right.
There's also one from on north to South Fulton.
Correct. And the South Fulton one, I believe, is scheduled for adding a flashing beacon. There was no mention of the other one. I just wanted to make sure we focus on it and consider having a flashing beacon there that the bicycles would be able to have access to so that both coming up from Fulton and going down from Drown, they can be protected by flashing.
Thanks.
Flashing lights. Thank you so much.
Thank you Russell.
One more hand.
Jack?
Nice to see you all again. I just have a quick comment. It's a general comment and it's on, it's on the heels of what the woman spoke to, I think, just before Kathy about not doing the proposed work, but doing the work to improve the trails. And I wanted to express and support a view of both and, that I think as much as we can increase pedestrian and bicycle traffic in Ojai and make that a norm, especially vis a vis the climate crisis, I feel that everything, all the decisions, especially big ones, especially infrastructure, need to be considered within the context of the climate emergency that was declared two years ago. And a number of us are very concerned about council members that do not act vigorously and progressively on climate issues. And we ask you to please get on board with that. So this is a vote for both and to improve all bicycle and pedestrian improvements. Thanks.
Thank you Jack. Ray?
Hello, council people. Ray Powers. I wasn't going to speak, but I was prompted by the woman speaking about the bike path behind us. No doubt it needs to be fixed. I know it's not part of the ATP grant. I ride it all the time. I ride my bicycle about 80% of the time. And Councilwoman Francina mentioned something months and months ago, probably before the pandemic, that those of us that use our bicycles primarily to commute, to get from one place to the other versus a leisure ride, want to be on the roads in a lane so we can do 20 miles an hour. Doing that on the bike path with strollers and people walking and especially with the advent of electric bikes, which is what I ride, on the bike path, everyone on that bike path, that's a dangerous situation unless you were to expand it, lay more concrete and put paths there for those of us who are commuters on bikes. So that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you Ray.
Mayor, may I make a comment? I just want to remind people of the vehicle code. You can look it up. Bicycles are legally permitted on any street. So our job is to make it safe. You cannot ban bicycles and relegate them only to the bike trail. It's just not, it's not possible. It doesn't, our goal is to have safe routes to school. And Ojai Avenue in Maricopa is the backbone of a bicycle friendly community. The children that live on the south side of Ojai Avenue need to safely cross and negotiate whatever locks they have to go to go to Topa Topa School, for example. So what we're doing here is not necessarily for seasoned cyclists. It's for, it's really for everyone, but it's most especially for the young people, the children in our community and also older people who are new on bikes and just don't feel safe unless they have an infrastructure. And that's what we're working on now, is a bicycle and a walk, more walkable infrastructure that works for everyone. But most important is to understand that this is a legal mandate. It's in the vehicle code. Bicycles are allowed on the street.
So Mayor, I just want to chime in on that because I agree with that. It also means that people that ride bikes have to abide by the rules of the road.
Absolutely.
It means you need to stop at stop signs. You mean you can't drive diagonally across streets. Don't teach your children that. You shouldn't drive, you shouldn't ride your bike the wrong way, on the wrong side of the street. But when we get to the 33, we're going to conduct, we're going to actually say we want to do that. But I'm just saying, all of us, whether you're in a car, whether you're on a bike, whether you're on a track, whether you're walking, we all have to recognize we're all a part of this community and that we're all in it together.
Okay, any, one more comment on Ojai Avenue? Two? Actually, two. Three.
Thank you for being here. Lori Malloy, Ojai resident for 55 years. Used to ride horses down the middle of the arcade. I mean, the valley has changed tremendously. And since COVID, we have an influx of people that do not know our town. They're coming from the Ojai Valley and on bicycles. They're with children on bikes. They have, they're on their cell phone trying to negotiate where to get to Ojai Brewery. And we have a problem. We have a car problem, but we also have a pedestrian and a bike problem with people not knowing where they're going. Those of us that have lived here forever know our town. People that don't live here, which is now, I don't know, let's just guess 50%, that new people that have bought homes here, half of the Ojai residents have left. We have to be mindful that this town was built 100 years ago. Congratulations, right? But this town was designed for horse and buggy. And now we're trying to make a new town out of an old town. We have infrastructure. You look at Los Angeles. It was built with trees, orchards everywhere. And now we have cars. Cars are not going away. People from Los Angeles are not going to all just all of a sudden be riding bicycles. My big plan, and it's a big plan, watching you guys every single time you're on TV, I watch you and I appreciate what you do. I really appreciate what you do. But living here my whole life, if we want cars off the street, we need to have a big plan. My big plan is the lot over by Church Road, across from Nordoff, across from the Catholic Church. My big plan is that is parking. We have the trolley that runs all the time. Need to buy one more trolley? Maybe. We advertise that this is a walking and biking town, if that's what you want. We can't have the cars coming into town. The people don't know where to park. They've never been here before and they're trying to find a place to park. Okay. So to eliminate that, you have a parking lot, you have shade structures that are solar covering the cars. You have a pool. We have our nice pool, okay? And the pool is heated by solar off of the structure. I mean, I have big plans. We need to get cars off the street. I understand it, but we are limited on our parking. We really are. And we need to figure that out. Otherwise, we're going to have people killed walking and people on bikes. We've got to get half the cars off the street somewhere. Thank you. I love you.
Thank you. We love you too.
Hi. Thank you for letting me comment. My name is Summer McComas. I own a business here in Ojai. Two things. I love the idea to making Ojai more bike friendly. I would love to see if there's any way here at Libby Park to have more bike access to actually housing the bikes so people can leave the bike, go walk around downtown. I know a lot of the hotels do offer rentals or free bikes at the inn and quite a few of the other big hotels. So that's great that they're leaving their cars at their hotel and riding in via either through the bike path or through Ojai, whatever makes it easier once we get through there. And also, when it comes to some of the crosswalks that are busy downtown and on Montgomery Street, is there a way to consider making it a pedestrian light? That way we get people actually stopping and waiting for the light to turn green for them and red for the traffic. That way we get more than one person at a time crossing the street. So it stops the traffic from having to stop all the time as well as getting more pedestrians to be safe crossing, if that makes sense. Because I know they have those like in Santa Barbara and Seattle and LA and stuff like that. And it helps just to keep everybody safe.
Clarify that. So you're saying actually have red flashing lights that tell, that tell people red means stop versus yellow flashing, which means warning or slow down?
Well, the pedestrian, pedestrian lights are just black or green and red. So they have to literally stop and wait for the pedestrian light to cross Ojai Avenue or Montgomery Avenue where those are even by Coffee Roasters, to wait until that light turns green. So that way traffic has a chance to continue going. So we're not stopping and going and pedestrians are safer crossing in a group instead of one by one.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you Summer. James, you want to comment?
The only comment I was going to make, just as part of this project, the beacons that we're installing at each intersection typically average about $5,000 and those signals are generally more expensive. So it's probably something that we wouldn't be able to handle through this grant, but it could be something of future discussion.
Thank you. Okay, is that it for comments on Ojai Avenue? Yep, one more? Come on down. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie. Thank you for letting me comment. As far as the crosswalks go, I don't know if anybody else has had these issues, but most of the time when I'm driving and there's somebody crossing the, one of those crosswalks, they don't push the buttons. So the lights aren't even flashing. So if you're going to go ahead and put more of those in, I just think that they're kind of useless in a sense because if they're not pushing the buttons to cross the street and they're just crossing, they have a much bigger risk of getting hurt. So that's the only thing everybody else didn't cover that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that wraps, oh, one more on the side.
My name is Richard Keat and I live in South Montgomery.
Can you pull it up?
Yeah. Richard Keat. I live on South Montgomery. Also have a place on Kenyatta Street. So I have some issues about that. But the way of getting from South Montgomery to North Montgomery and vice versa, has been really messed up by the most recent white signage on the ground so that you have arrows pointing right at each other. So people are coming from North Montgomery, turning right and getting into a lane that is head on with the same lane that people are trying to make a left turn onto North Montgomery. That was repainted about a year ago and it was completely botched, partly because they also put a left turn lane that goes directly into the gas station, which really made it confusing. So I don't know if somebody that understands these things might want to take a look at that because there's been so many times when there's two cars just headlight to headlight and they don't know what to do. And it creates a big jam up there, you know, probably several times an hour, I would say. So just something maybe you might look at.
Yeah, thank you. We'll take a look at it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And thanks to everybody for all of your astute comments and insights and we will definitely take them into consideration and talk to staff about them. All right, we're ready for a vote on this?
It would be appropriate this time to, having received public comment on the Ojai Avenue design options, for council to provide some direction. Mindful that this is not the go build it now vote. This is the go design it now vote. So it'd be vote on design. Thank you.
Motion?
All right, I'll make a motion. It's going to take a second though. I have about six different items. So if I ever get anything, that doesn't mean I was against it. I just don't know if I got everything on my list here. And they're not necessarily in any order. But number one is a fourth crosswalk on the west side of Blanche. Number two are beacons at, and again, I'm not completely sure where all of them currently are. I think I know pretty well, but it would include Bryant, Fulton, Drown. There's technically two at Fulton and I don't know if we need another one at Blanche. Now, I'm going to make this motion with all of them so we can then reduce them if we want, but I don't know if we want to have one on each side of the street, but I'll leave that open to someone to argue with me later. Number three would be the Kenyatta intersection, moving back the curb cutout, or excuse me, the curb extension so that we can move the bike lane a little bit further to what would be the northwest. A crosswalk at El Paseo that I believe we would want a beacon at as well. And then I think the DG across the front of Soul Park was the other one. With everything else in the plan, I think the same as it currently is.
May I suggest adding one thing?
Yeah, of course.
Could we perhaps to say, instead of saying beacons, say beacons are an appropriate signaling to allow some of these other ideas that have been brought up, especially minimizing curb extensions might free up dollars for that.
Absolutely. I think what we ought to do is, I think what would, I completely agree. Beacons, potentially the in the ground beacons, if the costs are reasonable because we want to get some feedback on that. And if there are any situations where curb extensions make a better financial sense or some reason, there's a good reason to do a curb extension too, we'd have that come back. But I think we'd prefer beacons as long as they're cost effective.
Right. Or other signaling devices.
Or other signaling devices.
Thank you Ryan. Well done.
I get that motion.
All right.
So just to clarify, we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. We're, we want to minimize curb extensions, but if there is a place where it's appropriate, we'll keep it. Correct? That's what we're voting on?
Yes.
As safety is our number one concern. Okay, maybe we have the roll call, please?
Who seconded this?
Bill.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, well done everyone. And thank you so much for your contributions.
Onto the.
Now, let's take a five minute stretch break. Yes. Okay, so five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, great. One of the, I personally don't have a heart to fight either way. The bigger issue that I have is with these changes, particularly like the massage at, I don't necessarily agree with the comments, but that's, it is what it is. But what I do believe in is that it's a working session. Just given the amount of detail. I'm mortally afraid of like running and then showing up back here at 95. I'm kind of thinking a working session sometime soon would be. Brown actor, yeah, I'm on a planning commission. I totally get it. Yeah. But I do think that a working session would be a workable thing to do just so that there's clarity because some of the decisions. I'll take another. Thank you so much. Yeah, to discuss the extensions versus the RFPs, that's probably the biggest thing to me. I'm agnostic about it. You know, whatever the city desires, I'm happy to do. But I do think there's enough variability in approach and perception, probably the bigger issue, that I don't want to just go flying.
It's like the little things.
Hi, Brian. Well, you know, this is, this is normal for us, for hours. No, we're. This is easy and it's so nice out here. Love you.
You're probably going to hear things from me you don't want to hear from me, but yeah.
Well, same here.
Oh, no, I already heard him. You've already heard mine? Yep.
Okay, we're back. Welcome back. And now we're going to talk about Maricopa Highway. So we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you.
Y'all can find a seat and we're going to have the staff report from James. Thank you.
So we'll start on the Maricopa Highway portion of the project. We had just a couple of quick comments on the the process and then I'll hand it over to Steve to walk us through the design. So we mentioned this earlier, but we are at about 90% on the original design for the Maricopa Highway design. We had, we investigated two alternate designs to about 10% and those are also included in the packet. Just as far as process goes, when we make modifications to to these designs, the modifications, as we mentioned earlier, must be reviewed and approved by Caltrans. We've been, and potentially by the grant agencies. We've been in contact with those groups over the last couple of weeks. I think that they're overall supportive of the idea that we want to make sure that the design meets the needs of the community. One comment from Caltrans that we did receive was that if we made, if we made major modifications to the Maricopa Highway design, that we would likely need to work with Caltrans to modify the demonstration to reflect the chosen design. So that's just something to to keep in mind. As we mentioned earlier, the demonstration currently is scheduled to run through December. So we do have a few months or approximately four and a half months should we choose to do that. And if the city chooses to explore one of the two alternate designs further, a design would need to be selected and developed to 95% over the next, probably about six months or so in order to meet the October 2022 deadline to begin construction. So that's just kind of the process as we go through this. Now to walk us through the existing design, Steve, Steve will walk us through similarly. For the members of the public, I think what we'll try to do is we'll note the title of the slides. We're starting on page eight, which has slides 29, 30, 31, and 32 on it. And we'll start from there, working from Maricopa Highway from the Y intersection forward. So with that, I'll hand it off to you, Steve.
Thanks. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Perfect, thank you. So moving on from the Y, we are showing bike lanes on either side of the street. Again, these are Class II bike facilities. We also have a limited stretch where we have some sidewalk infill. As with the case on Ojai Avenue, this is intended to close gaps within the sidewalk system. And in general, the unidirectional or bike lanes on either side of the street carry through to the city limits. However, there is a a spot that I'm going to show you in a second where we are showing a two-way bike lane on one side of the street. This was actually a request that we received during the design process. Next slide. So in the vicinity of the hospital, this is what the existing roadway section looks like. This is looking towards the town. Next slide. And so in this particular reach, this is adjacent to just easterly of the high school, there was a request to make this a short segment of two-way bike lane with keeping the one way on the other side of the street. Next slide, please. Then moving further to the northwest from Pyree through Church, we would be infilling the sidewalk, adding bike lanes on either side of the street and then adding a median that would separate the bike lane from the traveled way. This is basically a striped median, a buffer is actually the way that's typically referred to. Next slide, please. So at Church Street, this is a photo of what the existing conditions look like. Next slide. And then in the built condition, what you see here is a traveled way with a parking lane to create a parking protected bike facility. And I'm going to show you in a minute what that can look like with a little bit more vegetation to it. But the intent here is to provide for cars to park adjacent to the traveled way and to provide a shelter for the bike lane. Next slide, please. And so this, next slide, please. I think I skipped one. Go back, I'm sorry. And so this continues us on to the end of the bikeway. And so the thing I want to make clear here, this was the original design that has been pushed through to about 90%. And the general intent was to create a one-way bike lane on each side of the street with a buffering either by parking or by a striped buffered separation. Next slide, please. So before we get into right-of-way acquisition, I know a number of you all have comments and thoughts on this. And there was also some discussion between the design team and the city about exploring different alternatives. James spoke a little bit about this at this location. And they, there are two in particular that we're contemplating. One would be a Class IV, which would be a two-way bike lane on one side of the street. The other would be a Class I, which would essentially take the existing sidewalk on the south side, get my directions straight here. Actually, I guess that's, that's. Just a second, looks like we're going to get new graphics here. This is a test of my LASIK. So again, this shows the general geometry that I'm talking about. And so again, the idea here was to provide a bike lane in each direction on either side of the street. Getting back to what I started to say about the alternatives that we wanted to get out in terms of some general consideration today are two. One is a Class IV two-way bike lane on the westerly side of the street. You know, assuming Maricopa runs north-south. And the other would be to create what would be similar to what you have behind this amphitheater, which is what's known as a Class I facility. That would require widening the existing sidewalk adjacent to Nordoff High School and making it such that it's wide enough to accommodate both bicyclists and pedestrians. So that's the general improvements that we are proposing along Maricopa. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Could we, Susan? Could we, at this point, discuss possible options for removing the parking? I think that's a topic of great concern.
Yeah, so we'll take feedback or questions on either of those designs. So that's something we can talk about now.
And before council makes any decisions, of course, we'll want to hear from the public.
Questions for staff? And then, okay, so at this point, we're we're going to, we're, we should save our discussion until after the public. Seth?
We're just, we're asking questions right now.
You have a question, Randy?
Yes, I do. So Steve?
Yes.
So Steve, I probably have a different terms for the sides of the road. You're going east and west and I'm going north and south, which is okay. But if we stick to the school side and we stick to the church side, I think we'll all understand the conversation better.
That works.
So what I'm hearing right now, one of the, one of the diagrams is two lanes of bike, am I correct, on the school side?
Yes, sir.
And one lane on the church side or two lanes on the church side?
One.
Okay, and in your pictures, you didn't necessarily show the delineation of how we're going to have separation from cars and bikes. Is it stanchions? Is it, what's another name for it?
Oh, the candlesticks is kind of the generic term.
Are those included on both sides, one side or no sides?
They would be, they could be included on both sides. We had, we had some discussion with Caltrans about also using planters, something that was more substantial physically.
But, well.
To be clear, that was a discussion. I'm not saying that's what we're doing.
But before we go there, are they required?
No.
They're not required. So we could do exactly what you had showed on the drawing and that would just be a white striping.
That's correct.
Line designating the difference or the differential between riding a bike and driving a car?
Yes, sir. That's what's known as a beford bike lane.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah.
Question?
Am I correct in understanding that we're trying to create a design, the two-way, if, if, if the majority of the council approves, a bidirectional bike lane on the south side, the Nordoff side, and then one way where the cyclist goes with the traffic on the hospital or the church roadside? And one of our concerns is that if we have a buffer, and I think there should be some kind of a buffer, that we also want to be able to open up the lanes during emergencies. And, and that, that is our challenge and that's what we're looking for, a design that allows for full access during emergencies.
Yeah, and I would say, I think the intent of the Class IV proposal that that was included in the packet was an attempt based on the last council meeting on May 4th and the direction to look at the two-way bike lanes and getting some of those, the parking and some of the obstacles out of the street. This Class IV design is our attempt to do those things.
And Mayor, may I explain to the public the reason for the bidirectional on the Nordoff side?
Can we, can we wait till a discussion and move to public comment? You have a question?
Yeah, I have one more question. And then on the, Steve, again, on the sidewalk extension, could you clarify that? Why do we need to widen the sidewalk on the Nordoff side? That's what I heard, correct?
If we did a Class I facility, so Class I bikeways, and I think one of the speakers made allusion to this about when you have a mixture of bicy- made allusion to this about when you have a mixture of bicyclists and pedestrians, people with strollers and dogs and so on, that best practice is to create a wide enough cross-section so that the bicyclists have a dedicated area and the pedestrians have their own dedicated area. You can do it with DG, it doesn't have to necessarily be concrete. But the trick is to make it wide enough so that you're not having everybody try to occupy an eight to 10-foot wide space.
Well, it seems to me the sidewalk in front of Nordoff is already eight feet wide. I mean, that's one of the widest sidewalks in the community.
Right, so to be clear...
How would make, so are we saying that we want to move people on bikes onto the sidewalk where people are walking and put, dedicate two lanes of bike riding on the street? Is that what we're saying?
No, those are two different things. What I'm saying with respect to the Class I, which would be a combined pedestrian and bicycle facility, eight feet is the absolute minimum traveled way width for a two-way bikeway. For a Class I facility, which is intended to be two-way and also include pedestrians, typically the minimum cross-section is an eight-foot traveled way with two-foot shoulders on each side for a total of 12 feet. And so you can also play with that and put the eight feet all on one side and put the four on the other side so that that becomes a dedicated walking jogging path. And so without getting into the precise dimensions we might propose, what we'd be looking at is creating a wide enough facility off the street so that you would be able to keep parking, but you'd also have a safe environment for bicyclists and pedestrians that's up out of the traveled way, but also recognizes the fact that those are sometimes adversarial uses of the same space, and you're providing them enough room to coexist.
Well, I'm lost, so I'll keep listening.
All right, well, we'll move on to public comment. Gail, may we have the people on Zoom first?
Sure.
Thank you.
I will, let's see.
I'll note quickly to just that we did have the 34 written public comments regarding the ATP, and again, those will be posted. And then we did receive a petition today with about 270 signatures just before the meeting that opposed the lane reduction. So those will all be included in our posting of the information.
I can't hear, I don't know.
How many petitions do we get?
We got two, how many, 200, how many against it?
What was? Oh, how, well, the petition is against the, against the, the lane reduction.
How many signatures was that?
About 270.
Thank you. How many signatures did you get in support of lane reduction?
There was no petition for, for that, yeah.
Gail, are we ready?
Okay. The first person I'm going to bring on is Garrett Clifford. Garrett, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I strongly support the bike lane. I agree that having the Class IV bike lane makes it less confusing for bicyclists on the Nordoff side of the street, and I'm okay with that. I wasn't certain if the bike lane was going to be completely eliminated from the north side or the church street side of the street. I'd be willing to give that up if we needed to dedicate that more to parking. Also, the elimination of some of the parking on the side with the Class IV, I'm in agreement with that. I think it all looks good. And my only concern is just that we do a prudent job of decreasing as many concrete pathways as we can to DG and keeping as many trees in the planting plan as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Garrett.
Are you able to hear the Zoom caller?
Okay. We have two more, Gail?
Yes. The next person we have, let me mute Mr. Clifford there. The next person we have is Meg Goodwin. Meg, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and talk. Meg, are you there? It looks like you're unmuted. Okay, I will come back to her. The last person that we have is Bill Miley. Mr. Miley, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. Looks like you're unmuted. Go ahead, and you can talk.
Hello, my name is, for the record, Bill Miley. The proposal for the seventh or, seven or eighth tenth of a mile Maricopa Highway, which we call, is also in line, gentlemen, to move in the right direction or reduce greenhouse gas carbon reduction. A four-lane divided highway never belonged in our city. We definitely are improving the situation in spite of the naysayers. Public comments from folks against, who raise alarms about emergency vehicles caught in traffic, my understanding is recent fire department authority told the city to test the reduction with Caltrans approval, and they found it works. Also, what does a four-lane road going less than a mile do for an emergency evacuation? It allows two lanes going into it to expand the four lanes, or seven tenths of a mile, and then suddenly narrows to two lanes. Speed the four lanes to get ahead, screech to a stop minutes later. The argument is specious and extremely silly. I would hope our council will look to the future, use rational thinking in analyzing the claims that emergency needs require four lanes or eight tenths of a mile. Anyway you look at it, anyway I look at it, doesn't... Please support lane reduction, bicycle lane modification being proposed. I like it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley.
Okay, I will try Meg Goodwin again. Meg, if you're there, it looks like you're unmuted. If you're there, you can go ahead and speak. Meg Goodwin, are you there on Zoom? Okay, it doesn't look like she's actually there. I'll go ahead and mute her again. And we had two more people sign up, but they are not actually, they haven't logged into the Zoom meeting. So that's the end of our, our callers.
All right, we'll move on to our live audience here. We have about 25 cards, so I'll just call you up one at a time. And there is a two-minute timer, so I'll cut you off at two minutes, and I apologize, otherwise we'll be here all night. Start with Sylvie Lee. I can't, yeah, I'll just call up, how about three at a time? Sylvie Lee, John Lamar, and Andra Belknap.
Hi, I'm Sylvie Lee. Thank you so much for allowing all of us to give our input. I'm in support. I've been living here for, on and off for about five years. And I've walked that stretch of highway. I've biked it, I've driven it, and it seems to me that this demonstration has been successful in that it's showing what doesn't work and what does work. And I want to just express that those who have concerns, you know, those concerns have been listened to. They've made modifications, obviously. So I really just appreciate that we're all here to work together and really understand how we are living and working and hopefully playing well together. And the main focus is safety. We want to see that everyone is safe. So if, if we can just take a deep breath, recognize that we're here to really support one another in this endeavor, I really appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvie. John Lamar?
I'll take your 33 seconds. So this is great, great. Thank you guys for coming and doing this. It's a lot of work. I really appreciate it. Everybody who comes here tonight, what they have to say is important. This is America, and this has been a big project. It's pretty confusing. Like Randy said, he's totally confused. What needs to happen, in my opinion, is that Maricopa needs to be made more safe. And as opposed to what people have said, that the people who helped design this and contribute, none of them live in Miners Oaks, that's not accurate. Many, many people who have contributed and helped to this live in Miners Oaks and pass this Maricopa all the time. There is proposed right now a plan that eliminates the parking, provides a Class IV bike lane, and gets people riding safely when you're on the weekend looking at the bike lane that goes in one direction for most of the way. It's traveled mostly by people going in the wrong direction, especially on the weekend. And so we need to make this bike, this two-way bidirectional bike lane safe because it's already being used as a two-way bike lane. Hello? Okay. Next thing is that if you have two lanes on a road and you have someone who wants to pass someone, they will pass on the right, and they will possibly kill someone or injure them if that option is maintained. What we propose is that the parking be eliminated on Maricopa so that emergency vehicles in emergency situations where there's now parking, that becomes an emergency lane. You cannot travel on that lane while you're going down Maricopa normally. But if there's an emergency, you can go into that lane, pull over for an ambulance or a fire truck. This is the optimum design. We've worked on this, we've been proposing it for months. Everybody's confused. Don't be confused anymore. The optimum design is right here. It fixes everything. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And then the next three will be Leslie Schreiber, Larry Steingold, and then Michael Estwannik. Okay, hi, Andra.
Hi, it's Andra, actually.
Andra, I'm sorry.
So wanted to make a general comment. I'm hopeful that we all can agree that more bikes and fewer cars is better for everyone. It reduces toxic air pollution, reduces CO2 emissions. But biking is a behavior we need to incentivize because our existing infrastructure is made primarily for cars. So it's dangerous to ride along a highway. It's intimidating. And for those reasons, I'm a huge supporter of this project. I love the concept. Prior to the demonstration, I did not feel safe biking to Miners Oaks. I had no route to go, so I just didn't. I wanted to, but I was scared to. Now I can make that trip regularly. I think that's a story for a number of people, and that's really exciting. I also want to make the point quickly that not everybody has access to a car or the ability to drive a car. Personally, I have epilepsy. There are times in my life where I cannot drive. I'm not the only one. And bike lanes are important. Our public space is not only for cars. Finally, so I just want to share my enthusiastic support and appreciation particularly to Susan Francina, who has headed this effort and has received frankly unfounded criticism. And I really want to thank you all.
Thank you, Andra. All right, Leslie Schreiber.
Hello, and thank you for being here. I'm Leslie Schreiber. I just want to point out a couple of difficult areas. I oppose the lane reduction. Coming out of Valerio, there's always, it's difficult with the two-lane bike path because you can't, you're not sure which way you should be looking for bicyclists, and then you're still trying to look for traffic and trying to make a left or even a right turn. Also, coming into Valerio, making a left or a right turn is difficult with a two-lane bike path. I find it very dangerous. And there's another problem, too, with the people entering Chase Bank parking lot there. They'll, they'll turn right into Valerio and then turn left into the bank, but if there's a car there, they just stop, and everybody is deadlocked in that intersection. Another point of concern is coming out of Church Road and making a left turn onto Maricopa Highway is it's directly across from the exit for Nordoff. And cars coming out of Nordoff, you can go head-on. People aren't sure who's supposed to stop and who's supposed to let who go first. And I was almost hit one time at that intersection. Another thing I find confusing is a two-way bike lane in front of Nordoff because I thought the rules applied to bicyclists are the rules to the road. And all of a sudden, you are allowed to ride your bike on the wrong side of the road. And I find it very confusing. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Larry Steingold.
Thank you, Larry Steingold. Thank you very much. I appreciate all your efforts, especially planning for helping educate people who are, this is not our business. I'm all for keeping the lanes the way they are, no lane reduction. I'm for keeping double bike lanes on the Nordoff side, single on the other. I've been biking all over town for the past four and a half years now. But, excuse me, one of the, during the past year and a half, it has been more intensive because I've had less to do. And I have yet to encounter large groups of people struggling to get past on bike paths. The idea of bumpers and baby bumpers and zebra-dillos and planters has got to leave. The idea of parking has got to disappear. I think the idea of development on the vacant land, I don't know how large it is, is going to happen. Where will all those people exit? They're not going to exit onto a one-lane road because you're going to have some sort of mixed development eventually on that. Was it 14 acres or something? That's going to happen. Okay. So this has to be well-done. To increase density and to increase traffic by shrinking the lanes is going to be a mistake because we're not going to be Mackinac Island with just horses and buggies and bikes. Cars are not disappearing. Trucks are not disappearing. Delivery vehicles. Has anybody noticed the increase in delivery vehicles over the past year and a half? They're not disappearing. We're not, it's not going to go away. So please keep the lanes the way they are. Just get rid of the parking. Double, double the bike path on the Nordoff side, single on the other. No one crosses over and uses the hospital bike lane. They all cross over from the rotary and go straight. And just cut down some of the hedges at the Von Shopping Center so you see a sightline. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Michael Estwannik. And after Michael, we have Angelica Griffith, Karen Snyder, and Lee Hindman. Is Michael Estwannik still here? Nope. Okay, how about Angelica Griffith? And then Karen, and then Lee.
Thank you very much for everybody being here and for all the work that you do. My name is Angelica Griffith. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with all of you. It's a pleasure to be here and to get to know you actually in person. I've been seeing you on the Zoom thing. Okay, I do not oppose the bike lanes where and when they are reasonably unsafe. I believe they can be added to Maricopa Highway Avenue from Ojai Avenue to El Roblar. I believe they can be added and be saved into, inexpensively and without long disrupted construction project, which is the planters and the armadillos. It is really disrupted. Keep it four lanes designed and simply add a single-direction bike lane on the far right of each side of the highway. Emergency vehicles will not be impeded or created more danger to vehicles, bikes, and pedestrians. Unnecessary congestion will not be created with every right turn slowed down and by left turns into Nordoff. Access onto the highway from side streets will be safer. I do not, I don't know whether two bike lanes, somebody else said that, the front, the bike lanes in front of Nordoff are still being considered. And if so... being considered. And if so, it seems to me very, very bad idea to deviate from California vehicle code that has always been safely required by bikes to operate in the same direction, directional vehicles. So, thank you for letting me speak. That's how I feel that we should be more, allow people to participate in their opinion on how to make changes in this beautiful town. I came here many years ago because the peace and the tranquility and the freedom to walk around, to bike or to drive seems to me now it's been trying to be caught. So, I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelica. Karen?
Hi, my name is Karen Snyder, and I live on the east end of Ojai. And I can't vote in the City of Ojai Matters, but I want to emphasize that the city's decisions affect those who live outside the city boundaries. And I oppose the Maricopa Highway lane reduction. I think that safety would be better served with wide painted bike lanes separated from cars with reflective posts that don't block visibility, not as currently proposed using parked cars and trees that block motorists' views. And I also don't support the two-way bike lanes on the same side of the street. It's very confusing for motorists that are turning out, and it's not safe for cyclists. The one thing I really wanted to address is that the city is taking $4.52 million in grant money. That's quite a bit of money. And by the way, the government's ability to give grant monies come from the taxes that we pay. I agree that the money would be better spent on Ojai Avenue than on Maricopa Highway, as many more accidents happen on Ojai Avenue. But having said that, again, that's $4.52 million in grant money. A wiser older friend of mine once said, "All government money comes with a sock in the jaw." And you've also heard the expression, "There's no such thing as a free lunch." So, with that in mind, what are the strings that are attached to these grants? It's not a rhetorical question. I've never heard anyone on the City Council speak to that. I would really like to know. And as taxpayers, I feel like we have a right to know. This past Saturday, I was sitting in Libby Park with a friend. He pointed out that there were cameras in the trees above us. I'd never noticed that before. So, I just wonder who is monitoring these cameras? So, are we going to have to put surveillance, like facial recognition cameras, up everywhere as one of the strings that are attached? I don't know. I'm just using that as an example. I appreciate the City Council wants to make Ojai safer and nicer, but do we really need to spend that much money? It's been emphasized that city taxpayers are not going to have to contribute much of their own money, that it will mostly come from grant monies. But at what future cost? Again, what are we and our children in the future going to have to do or allow for this money? Thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Karen. Next, we have Lee Hindman. And after Lee, we have Joy Wensleyoff, Cindy Jones, and Colin Jones.
Thank you. I'm Lee Hindman, and I am so grateful for all your hard work and effort. And it's a big task that you're dealing with. Mostly, thank you for listening to us. We live here. I live in Miners Oaks area, and I ride my bike a lot on the Maricopa Highway 33. My experience is the lane reduction plan is causing more harm than good. I'm on it all the time on a bike or in my car. I live there. I like the idea of having a bike lane. Bike riders are generally quite astute. They don't need a barrier between the bike and the traffic. They know how to maneuver that. Motorists are experiencing difficulty with the lane reduction in front of the businesses. Not the other part, it's fine. I go to the bank, the grocery, the gas station, pharmacy, medical arts. I do most of that in my car when I'm running errands. It used to be easy. Now, it's very difficult pulling out of businesses in a safe manner. We need to keep a flowing center lane. We need to keep the additional lane for pulling in and pulling out. It's really not rocket science. It's creating problems. Mainly, it's dangerous. I have no problem with lane reduction and street parking in front of the meadows, the big field on the other side by Church Road. That makes sense because we have events at Nordoff. You need extra parking. People park there. When we don't have events, people don't park there, except a few in front of the meadows. My biggest issue, and it happens all the time because I'm at Chase and Vons, et cetera, when I turn left from, between the Attitude Adjustment Shop and Ben Franklin, waiting to turn left onto Maricopa Highway, it's hazardous. That, we already heard one person talk about it. It's bogged down there frequently. I see people doing that, what do you call that, mad dash, you know, to jet out there because there are cars on both sides. You got to look for a bike. There's people behind you. They're clogging up. That place is clogged all the time. My philosophy is that if it works, don't fix it. It used to work. It's not working. So, I'm in support of keeping four lanes. Love bike lanes. Keep emergency vehicle operations in place and
Thank you, Lee.
slow down this lane reduction.
Thank you so much. All right, Joy Wensleyoff, please.
Hi, I'm Joy Wenslaw, and I live on Loma Drive in the Miramani area. And I would like to say that I object to reducing the four lanes to two lanes. There's many reasons for that. And one of the things I'd like to say is that we shouldn't have two-way bike lanes in front of the high school. It sets a precedence saying that it's legal for bicycles to drive in two different directions for only two blocks. I've been caught at the Attitude Adjustment, trying to make a left turn onto the highway, which is challenging enough, and having bicycles riding the wrong direction, coming from the right to come up where there is no bike lane. That is going against the direction of traffic because they're encouraged to in front of the high school. You know, kids should know that bicycles are part of the motor vehicle code and need to follow the law. And two lanes of bicycles in front of the high school is very unsafe and it's illegal. I object to the parking on the highway. I know you've made suggestions that some of this will be changed, but the parking is part of the problem. It is very scary. I know you've heard many stories about that, about people opening car doors in front of cars on the highway. And the permanent planters are also a problem, as you're aware of. There are many, many people that are against this highway lane reduction. There are a group of us that definitely believe that it's unsafe for many reasons, and there are stories after stories. There are more accidents, I believe, in the last year since this demonstration project went in than had happened on this stretch of highway in a long time. People getting caught on the bulbouts, or not bulbouts, but the armadillos. People getting caught a motorcycle accident that just happened a couple of weeks ago. People getting rear-ended, and people getting caught in intersections. I just feel it's a dangerous design, and it should be modified. And I believe the best way that that happens is we put back the four lanes, put in one-directional bike lanes on either side, and leave it that way. I think that would accommodate the safety of bicyclists, and it would accommodate the traffic that needs to
Thank you.
excuse me.
Thank you, Joy.
egress back and forth. Thank you, dear.
Thank you. All right, Cindy Jones, please. And then after Colin Jones, we have Randon Garver, Brian Akins, and Russ and Debbie Cloud.
Thank you, City Council members, for all the hard work you do. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Cindy Jones, and I live in Ojai. And I'm wondering why the City Council is ignoring its own survey that the results clearly reveal that we, the people of Ojai, do not like or want a lane reduction on Maricopa Highway. Tell me, does a small group of people get to decide for the rest of us? Keep Maricopa Highway a four-lane highway? Install safe bike lanes that are not a death trap? No two-way bike lanes? As far as I know, those are illegal. I know some bikers and motorists that are actually avoiding Maricopa Highway because of the confusing so-called "design." There's no safety involved in that design, as I can see it. And this is sort of about Ojai Avenue, but I think you're planning non-curb outs along Maricopa Highway. So, I'm saying, don't install dangerous curb outs anywhere. It's hard enough for some people to drive in Ojai, as it is. Randy commented. These curb outs only make it more difficult, not safer. And do you remember the curb outs that had to be removed several years ago? Are we going down that road again? Protect pedestrians with crossing lights, not curb outs. And while you're at it, try teaching bikers the laws of the road, how to ride safely for themselves and other pedestrians. Seems like no one knows the bike laws anymore. And I appreciate your time. And it looks like you're moving toward a solution where we can all, where it can be a compromise. Because as Betsy said, we all want what's best for everyone in Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Colin Jones?
Hi. Thank you for what you do, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I own a bicycle, and I enjoy using it. I'm grateful for the bike paths. I use them. I live in East End, and I ride down Grand Avenue into town regularly and back. I'm not against bike lanes on Maricopa Highway, but what is proposed, in my estimation, is dangerous because it defies both natural traffic flows and defies common sense. I've witnessed the aftermath of two accidents caused by the monstrosity, as I call it, on Maricopa Highway. The first appeared to be a fender bender at Maricopa and Perry Road. As I passed, two people were exchanging information, both looking frustrated and puzzled at the confusing mess, which is Maricopa Highway. The second was a motorcyclist laying in the road in agony, holding his leg, his motorcycle on his side, and that was right in front of the hospital. When you drive Maricopa Highway, you can't help but see the hesitancy and confusion of other drivers from turning into or leaving both the hospital or Perry Road, and also the two-way bicycle lane and the parking in the middle of the road. These are just dangerous. If I've seen these two accidents, and I live in East End, how many accidents has there been? I don't know. A more serious accident is bound to happen, and then someone could lose their life. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Randon Garver? Brian Akins? Oh, Randon? Brian Akins? Is he still here? And then after Brian, we have Russ and Debbie Cloud.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for the time you're spending on this, and those on the right who are supporting. Going to the report, page 10 of 126, Section E, labeled "Incidents," might give you a clue why I'm up here. It says, "There has been three bicycle incidents, two due to the armadillos." I'm one of those, as my good buddy Cindy Convery pointed out. But I like that section that says "two due to the armadillos." It seems like this report states that the responsibility solely is upon the city and the armadillos that they installed. And so, my question, and I said to the mayor, this will be the shortest question tonight, is why the heck are the armadillos, or, excuse me, the zebra-dillos still out there waiting for another accident to happen? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Russ and Debbie Cloud. And after that, we have Larry Harola, Elena Daly, and Luann Faye.
Thank you for having us this evening. So many of the points that I wanted to make, can you not hear me?
You have to speak into it.
So many points that I wanted to make this evening have already been made on the lane reduction. Number one, it's an eyesore. Number two, it is a state highway, and I'm concerned with the fact that Caltrans actually approves something without asking the people that are affected by this lane reduction. I never heard anything. I've lived here for 35, 36 years. The accidents, let's talk about that. There's been so many. They talk about the motorcycle accident that happened on July 3rd. That was a very good friend of mine and my husband's. The Ojai Valley News reported that he had minor injuries. His minor injuries were a brain injury, a brain bleed, a broken clavicle, four broken ribs, and a punctured lung. Those were his minor injuries. What's it going to take? Is somebody going to have to die before it's realized that this is a very bad idea? You know, you have to think it's common sense. And somebody said, if it's, you know, if it's not broke, don't fix it. It wasn't broken. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Next, we have Larry Harola, please.
Hello. I'll keep it brief. Larry Harold, I've lived in Ojai 50 years this year. And I just want to say I'm totally opposed to this design of the lane reduction. The three of my kids went to Nordoff, and we haven't had an actual example of when high school was in session this year to have a test on this. So, I'm totally opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Alana Daly.
Thank you. My name is Alana Daly, and I just want to thank four out of five of you for paying attention to every speaker, whether they're opposed or not. I also want to give you a count so far of the number of speakers who have opposed. It's easier if I just tell you who's in favor. The total number of people who have come up here, there are three who are in favor. Everybody else is against what's going on on Maricopa Highway. And I will make this as brief and as concise as possible. I live in Ojai, and my family owns a locally operated business, and I represent a lot of businesses, particularly in the Arbolata area, excuse me, at the Arbolata, the arcade, with the company that I represent. I reside near Topo Topo Elementary School, which also happens to be where Betsy walked to get voted for, and she represents our neighborhood. As a constituent, I feel like my voice has not been heard regarding this, but I haven't spoken up enough. I made a right turn on Maricopa Highway coming off of the main road. I was passing Vons. Kept going. This was after you did all of the bulbouts and whatever the jargon is that you use. And a CHP landed right behind me, red lights flashing, sirens blowing, Code 3. I had no place to pull over. I couldn't put my car in a parking lot. I couldn't park it. I drive an SUV, okay? Most families in Ojai, when they're driving, are driving SUVs. It was scary. And the thought that occurred to me was, what if I'm responsible for some child that got injured and they're not getting to where they need to get or the emergency treatment that they need to, because I've blocked that CHP? What if it's an ambulance and they're What if it’s an ambulance, and they’re carrying somebody’s mother-in-law to the hospital, and they can’t get there because I can’t find a place safely to pull over? Now, I understand that supposedly you guys have made corrections, but I haven’t seen them yet, okay? Then I realized that I’m not responsible. The responsibility lies on you. That puts the onus on the city for that man’s injury, who spoke to how he was injured, and it was caused by the lovely Armadillos, right? Or whatever you call those things. That scares me also, because our city requires taxpayer money. We don’t have the money to go pay lawsuits when people start to sue because they’ve gotten injured due to this lane change. So very quickly, I’ll just say, I’m not in favor of two lanes, one on each side. I’m in favor of four lanes. I’m in favor of bike lanes, one on each side, following the direction of traffic. And that’s what I’m going to say, because I don’t have enough time.
Thank you, Alana. Next, we have Luann Faye, and then we have Jeff Weinstein, Russell Sidney, and Jeff Otterbein.
I’m Luann Faye. I’ve lived in Ojai over 60 years, and primarily, all of that has been with Maricopa Highway as our primary roadway. And my husband and I, and our five children, have used it walking, riding bikes, and bicycles. I am totally opposed to this, I’ll call it, ridiculous plan. I won’t go into all the details. The people prior to me, Alana, and I think her name was Cindy, have gone point by point. And a couple of people have already used my intended term, “If it’s not broken, don’t fix it.” You put in the blinky lights for the crosswalks, good. You’ve sort of done bicycle lanes, half-good. Get rid of the double lane, you know, the two-way one. So one bicycle lane on each side, finish the green striping, or whatever you need to do, put the flat demarcation little bumpy things for a little extra caution, and get rid of everything else. Other places have bigger roads and things, and they have a bike lane. And there’s no reason that Ojai has to go through all these shenanigans. So eliminate it, the extras, and whether you have the funding for it, the grant or not, don’t waste the money on something that should never happen. Use the money for some of the other things. Fix some of the roads. And another thing that I don’t think I’ve really heard mentioned is, this mess will divert traffic into residential areas, and I don’t think that’s a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Luann.
My name is Jeff Weinstein. Little bit of history. Starting in late 2013, at 2:30 on Wednesday afternoons, the same small group of citizens met while the rest of us were at work, and concocted lane reduction on Maricopa Highway, based on an urban design template used in Portland, Santa Monica, the Netherlands, and major European cities. I first learned about the proposed plan when I read about it in the Ojai Valley News in August 2017. And here we are, four full years later, looking at the same lane reduction plan, no options, no alternatives, and no compromise. We live in a different time than 2013, 2017. The current plan does not work. Climate change, the pandemic, repeated economic disruptions have made infrastructure vital, and our state and nation are not building or improving our infrastructure. We have no business eliminating much-needed infrastructure when we cannot predict the future. The current plan lacks flexibility where it is most needed. The December 2017 Thomas Fire burned one-quarter mile north of the Five Stop, near the Deer Lodge. Had the wind been blowing in the opposite direction, south, as on most early afternoons, towards Ojai, instead of north, towards Carpentaria and Montecito, where 22 persons perished in mudslides, the fire would have roared out of the canyon, forcing inhabitants of Miners Oaks, who cannot vote because they don’t live in the city limits, and which has no sidewalks, sewers, or fire hydrants, and includes three mobile home parks, totaling 139 homes, two nursing homes with 147 beds, and various apartment buildings and condo complexes. All those persons, thousands of them, residents, would have been forced to evacuate via a single lane. Fire evacuation will cause residents of Miners Oaks to become trapped in the flames north of the Five Stop, just like the November 2018 Camp Fire in Paradise, California, which also narrowed its main street to one lane with a road diet. The population density in this portion of unincorporated Ventura County is twice the density of Ojai. The city of Paradise was warned by Caltrans that the town had significant constraints and capacity limitations in the Butt County Civil Grand Jury report. Yet the city instituted a road diet anyway, and 85 persons died, many in their cars. I spoke with David Hawkes, Butt County Fire Chief, serving Paradise during the campfire, who will testify in court if necessary. He explained, “The worst-case scenario is to divide an evacuation route into more than three lanes separated by medians.” The current Maricopa Plain has four lanes separated by medians, because this uses the emergency personnel to direct traffic, whose time is better spent fighting the fire and/or aiding residents. The urban design template from the Netherlands that’s been plopped down into semi-rural Ojai will urbanize the thoroughfare with congestion and parallel parking, because that’s the purpose of lane reduction, is to slow traffic to a crawl, just like it currently is in downtown Ojai.
Thank you, Jeff.
Does our... Let me continue, please. I can... No, you didn’t interrupt anybody else this whole evening. I’ve just got two more paragraphs. Let me finish.
Oh, I did, actually.
Thank you. Does the city council want us to suffer the same fate as downtown and look like Santa Monica? The city’s own survey on its website displays overwhelming opposition to the demonstration project and lane reduction. Yet the city council refuses to acknowledge or even read the results and honor the will of people like us, because it does not reflect your own personal agenda and those of your most ardent supporters.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. To be fair, I’m going to have to cut you...
I love Maricopa Highway.
I’m going to have to cut you off now, because, to be fair, I’m sorry. Well, that’s because they spoke for... We spoke too many... Next, we have Jeff Otterbein.
Any document goes to the sheriff. Please deliver this to the Betsy Sticks, the lawsuit, and the lawsuit addresses... Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
...the legal deficiencies with a secret exemption, and I’m asking it to place it into the public record.
Okay, thank you.
So if there is no compromise, the back of the...
Jeff Otterbein?
Hi, my name is Jeff Otterbein. I live in Miners Oaks. I rode here this evening on my bicycle with my wife down the Maricopa Highway. I appreciate it a lot. It feels safe to me, and my wife and I do it several times a week. Wow, so much has been said. Anyways, I think that the two-way bicycle lane is a good solution. Get rid of the parking. And I organize bicycle trains to and from schools when school is in session, Miramonte School and Topa Topa School. And we’ve done several bicycle rodeos where we teach kids bicycle safety and how to use their bicycles. Just to say that there are some people working on bicycle safety with young people. I took a bike ride the other day with several students from Miramonte School down the bike path, and to watch young students ride a bike on a safe bike path warms my heart, and I think it warms a lot of people’s hearts. They are free, and they feel the wind in their hair, and it’s an awesome thing to ride a bike, and I would just like to promote bicycle riding as much as we possibly can in a safe way in Ojai. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Next, we have Dennis McCarthy, and then Wendy Lerner and Lon Justice.
Thank you. I’m Dennis McCarthy. I’m a member of Save Maricopa Highway. We strongly believe in safe bike lanes, in safe pedestrian paths, and we want to keep four lanes on Maricopa Highway. We believe there’s a way to accomplish all of that if we have a reasonable degree of compromise, and I think there have been actually discussions within the council and with our design engineer that could accomplish that. So I would encourage you to pick the bike lane option, which is, I think, the topic of today’s conversation. Pick the bike lane option that gives us this best solution, four lanes, safe bike lanes, and safe pedestrian crossing. Last thing, and you’ve heard a bunch of people talk about this today, but our Save Maricopa Highway people have been gathering petitions at Vons and other places, and it’s amazing the number of negative stories. People would be coming out of Vons with their arms full of groceries, and we’d say, “Do you want to sign the petition to get rid of this demonstration project?” People will stop, put down their groceries, tell us a horrific story of dealing with the Maricopa Highway, and then sign our petition. So there are a lot of people who are very angry. They view that as dangerous and confusing. I hope you’ll listen to that. You know, we’ve also heard about many of the stories, people having accidents, near-misses on Maricopa Highway. Keep it four-lane. We love the fact that you are considering bike lanes; that’s fine. I ask the city council to be smart in your bike lane decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Wendy Lerner. And then we have Lon Justice after that, Marjorie Emerson, and Lou Precher? I’m not sure. Hi, Wendy.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. A majority of respondents to the poll taken don’t want the Maricopa Highway changes per this plan. The city manager, James Sebeka, indicated in the summary that the poll, quote, “responses that indicated they do not support the project were due to issues that have since been modified.” I think that is probably a wrong assumption. It may be that the more about the plan residents know, and the more residents know about it, the number of those who oppose it has actually greatly increased. I bring to your attention not only the hundreds of signatures that were given tonight, but other packet of petitions have already been submitted through Gail. One question that was not posed in the poll is, would you want this particular project if the city had to foot the bill? Well, just because the funds come out of another government pocket does not mean our tax dollars and the tax dollars of future generations are not paying for it, or more honestly, paying the debt on it. Grants are not free money, and they are not free for another reason. They buy control over what our city does. Were the citizens of Ojai told of all the non-locally determined detailed strings attached to this grant? Big government bureaucrats have to approve more and more of what we do and don’t do in our city. You, the councilor, are taking away our local control and handcuffing us to one-size-fits-all requirements that will far outlast your terms. Each grant you accept adds to our communities and each individual’s loss of freedom now and for the future. Please stop succumbing to the enticement of trading home rule for grant money. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Good evening. I’m usually not one to get up and speak. I love to just watch on TV and see what’s going on in the city, but I live on Hermosa Road, and I have family that lives in Miners Oaks, and so we do a lot of traveling on that Maricopa Highway. So I wrote some things down. These are things that I’ve witnessed, and a lot of people have said the same things, but I’m just going to read this. The plan to reduce traffic lanes to make the area more bike-walking, parking-friendly might work in an area that has minimal traffic. This is not the case here. Reducing the lanes has increased the chance of accidents, backups, traffic, as drivers get frustrated and drive irresponsibly. The intended use of reduction to provide parking has not had its intended effect, as only on the weekends has there been an increase of parked cars. There was ample space for pedestrians and bike riders before this lane reduction. Some of the comments that were made about different types of bike lanes, I think it’s a good idea, but I think there’s an ample room there. With the addition of the Artesian family facility in Miners Oaks, it has increased already a busy section of the highway. As the city pushes to increase housing density with ADUs, et cetera, the traffic will only increase, adding to the cars driving to Nordoff, Ojai Hospital, preschools, and many other offices and businesses. What we need to spend our money on, and this is something that was brought up, kind of, is we need a light at Valley Rio and Maricopa Highway, a stoplight. We’ve had too many accidents and loss of life at that intersection. Turning from the Valley Rio onto Maricopa Highway is a dangerous nightmare, and it’s getting worse. My family says leave four lanes and add a traffic light. Thank you.
Thank you, Lon. Next, we have Marjorie Emerson.
Good evening. I’ve been here four hours.
Thank you.
Marjorie Emerson, I live in Oakview, and all of us in Oakview do our shopping and medical things and so on in Ojai. And I’m definitely against reducing the lanes. My goodness. I often come in from Ace Hardware, so I come by the school that way. Now we have the parking, we have doors opening from these parked cars going in and out. And then I have trouble figuring out when I can turn into the bank or to Ben Franklin to Vons, whatever. And then when I came the other way, I had a medical place to find. I couldn’t even find it, and I had to go way, 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 way down, you know, to make the U-turn to come back and go around again. But it seems like anywhere with these medical facilities, you’ve got to have room for us to pull over to the right when the ambulance goes by. There’s nowhere to pull, so I think the concrete things are dangerous. And I noticed last week, on Telephone Road in Ventura, on East Telephone Road, they have it open, they have the four lanes, and the bike lanes are divided by a plastic, kind of like a little plastic pole, so that you can certainly see it. If somebody hit it, it wouldn’t be dangerous, and it allows, they still have a fair amount of space. And not that I’ve seen many bikes going by, but at least, you know, there are other ways to do that, to give us back our four lanes. It’s kind of scary for us old folks that are not coming on a bike.
Thank you, Marjorie. Next, we have Lou Precher. Sorry, I butchered your name. And after Lou, we have Shelley Griffin. And after Lou, we have Shelley Griffin, Betsy Carnes, and Atticus Reyes. And that's, those are the only, those are the last cards I have.
Got it now? Okay. My name is Lou Prazjer. I'm here to address the issues of Maricopa Highway, the zebra-dillos. I appreciate the time to speak on this important problem. I am behind the curve and really didn't want to get involved in this. I'm retired, and I thought this is going to take time. But as one of the many taxpayers here, I thank you for your support of an open and transparent government. I'm requesting copies of all environmental reports, impact reports that were done, and all related documents supporting and descending from the beginning to current. Further, I would like copies of all input from all other sources related to this decision. Please do not redact or modify any documents. I ask for these on behalf of myself and other people who are interested. As you know, ignorance is the tool of oppression. If you do not have all the information, if I do not have all the information you have seen and discussed, I cannot provide an informed and competent response. Some of the things I'd like to know, if the traffic during school hours were considered, what was the additional climate change from pollution from running vehicles waiting to get out of schools and so forth? Consideration of tempers and stress caused by extended wait times? And what about special need children's pickups from the school? That is a problem, and I realize that's going to be probably the school's part to get to. But the problem is being caused by you. I ask for these on behalf of myself and others. What about emergency vehicle operations to and from the hospitals, doctor's office, at a time when increased traffic is existing? Doctors called in for emergency needs. How will they get to the hospital during increased traffic times? To say nothing of our nurses, who may need to respond to major catastrophic events. In the instances of this, life and limb may be hanging in the balance in times of the essence. Did the Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, and other emergency response operations have an opportunity to provide written input on your decision? If they did, I would like copies of it. If it was oral, I would like copies of your translation of what the recommendations were.
Thank you, Lou. Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Griffin?
Thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to.
Can we have a quieten house? Go ahead, Shelley.
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to the city for really keeping our kids in mind. And, and to Jeff, who has done wonderful things with our kids in teaching them about bicycle safety. This used to be a very bicycle-friendly valley. And I know from generations of, of family members who've lived here, how independent they were as a kid because they could ride all over this town. And what I'm hearing a lot of tonight is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I will say that for our kids, it was broken. And I'm really great, grateful that you guys are looking at safe routes for kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Next, we have Betsy Carnes.
Sorry, Betsy Carnes. I think I win the prize for longest in Ojai. I've been here 67 years. My family moved onto Rice Road 73 years ago, when Rice Road was a dirt road. We grew up on our bikes. We grew up walking through town. And I just came up here to say I'm totally in support of whatever promotes biking in Ojai.
Thank you, Betsy. Next, we have Atticus Reyes, and then Anita Hendricks and Kathy Nolan.
Atticus Reyes, 24 years old. Grew up in Ojai, went to Nordoff High School, played football at Nordoff High School, coached at Nordoff High School. I guess I never left. Long story short, I'm in full support of this lane reduction and the needs of promoting the safety of our students who attend Nordoff High School. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but a lot of people have mentioned the outnumbering of people who oppose this. So I decided I needed to come and speak in favor of it. You've heard a lot of allusions to how Ojai used to be, how it always was. But we know, people have said things, and it's completely true. Cars aren't going anywhere. If anything, cars are getting faster, and they're driving them faster. And I think the idea of caution or hesitation around the high school in a fast car is not something we would be upset about. I think it would be something that we would rejoice at around our most precious resource, which is our children. So I don't know why people would want to drive faster on there when they already do drive fast around there. I think the concern about the emergency vehicles is really, really important. That's why I would like the city council to discuss what the person who spoke on the public comment on Zoom was about, that apparently there was a test already done, and that it apparently passed for how it could transport around that area. So I would really like to see the council discuss that. And lastly, there's been a lot of diversity of opinions here, which is really, really great. But there hasn't been a lot of diversity of generations. And I don't presume to speak on behalf of my entire young generation, but I do know I can speak as one of them. And we know that the most existential threat to our livelihoods right now is climate change. And it is the climate disaster. And anything that can prioritize not only the safety of our earth right now, but of my generation, of my children's generation, of my unborn generations that are here to come, that is the top priority that sits with you all. So I ask not to do what is politically viable, but to do what is right in protecting our kids and our future generations of Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Atticus. Next, we have Anita Hendricks, and then Kathy Nolan.
I also endorse that we have a climate crisis. We need to do everything we can to reduce our use of fossil fuels. I live in Miners Oaks. I'm a resident of Ojai Valley for over 40 years. I ride my bike all the time. I have gone down and turned from El Roblar onto the road that runs in front of Nordoff. And the way it was with the way cars used to park, and they still do, in front of the Land Conservancy, I would be between them and the cars going by. And the cars going by would be so close that if somebody opened a car door, there, there could very easily be an accident. It forced me off where I was supposed to legally be. I had to go and ride on the sidewalk, which is not legal, so that I would feel safe. I'm concerned about all the dis, you know, all the people who are dissatisfied with this. I think we can come up with a solution that hopefully will address some of the issues on both sides. We need to have, I think we need to encourage and foster pedestrian and bike use. But at the same time, if we created a parking lot, which I think there are some entities that are willing to have us create a parking lot for the cars that go to the Land Conservancy, that would take away one lane that's devoted to standing cars, which is still unsafe for, for those people parked to open their car doors with another car going by. I think that we should have a two-lane bike lane plus pedestrian on the Nordoff side because that's where the bikes are now riding. They're not going across the street. And when you come over from the bike path to the Y, there's not a direct link across that street on that side. So you would have to go this way and then across. So I would encourage, somebody mentioned this one intersection that's quite problematic in, near the shopping center, maybe have a light put in there or something there. We need to calm down the traffic over there. Cars go too fast between the turn at El Roblar and, and Nordoff. It's frightening if you are on your bike. There are so many other things I'd love to say, but please consider the extra parking. Take those cars off the road. And please give us a really safe, two-lane, dedicated bike and pedestrian way. Thank you so much for all your efforts.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you for your courage and, and fortitude in taking this on. You, my hat is off too.
Thank you, Anita. Next, we have Kathy Nolan. And after that, we have Robin Gerber, Cindy Convery, and Russell Sidney.
Council and staff, thanks for having me up again. I'm just going to read some of these so I don't miss anything out. Number one, I wanted to say that I'm in favor, I'm going to start on the north side of the highway. A northbound bike lane, keep the sidewalk where it is. Have a buffer, have an eight-foot wide emergency lane, and then the 12-foot travel lane. Keep the center medium on the south side. You would have the 12-foot travel lane and eight-foot emergency lane, and then a buffer, and then a two-way bikeway. Keep the sidewalk where it is. Keep the trees in. You may have to move them around, but essentially you're taking out the parking. So that's my, what I'm in favor of there. Also, that good design will create safety and accessibility without oversigning. So just keep that in mind while you're going through this process. Also, take advantage of where you can, where it's doable to capture storm water. For example, the drainage on East Ojai Avenue, which is east of Shady Lane. Also, in case you're not aware, VCTC, I believe, is having a CMAC grant coming up. If for some reason, if it's for lighting or the crossing beacons, we do need more funding to make this safe for the entire community. Vehicle drivers, emergency vehicles, bike riders, pedestrians, and everyone else in between. I encourage that. And I'm going to leave it. I also wanted to say, whatever you do, I do understand, keep it cost-effective. But I wanted to throw out that there is another grant possibly coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Robin Gerber?
Robin Gerber, I live on Tiaramina. First of all, thank you for the huge amount of work that this has been and the good faith that you have brought to it. It's not perfect. You already knew that. But you know, a couple of years ago, I was walking out to the Ojai Meadow Preserve to the pond. And there was an old woman, meaning older than me, feeding the ducks. And two days later, I found out that she'd been killed on Maricopa Highway. So the one thing I haven't heard people say, you think it's not safe now? No, it is a lot safer now. I turn from Valley Rio left and right at least a couple of times a day. The traffic has slowed down. Honestly, I sort of feel like I'm living in a different place because my experience of the road is so much better than much of what I've heard tonight. Certainly also, as a bike rider, turning onto Maricopa Highway was a real adventure. So thank goodness for bike lanes. But I would say you've slowed the traffic down, and you talk about safety. Councilwoman Francina, we have a lot more safety. I would say that a light at Valley Rio would be great. One of my neighbors suggested that. But certainly, that driveway that goes to the Chase Bank off of Valley Rio is a real problem now. It has been for a long time. If that could be closed off, I think that would help a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Cindy Convery?
Hi, Cindy Convery. One thing that nobody's brought up tonight, and I don't know if it's possible, but is there a way to extend the bike path, our bike path that runs to Ventura down the Maricopa Highway? Take the parking away, extend the bike path. The way it is now, the bike path going to Ventura, when cars turn onto like Loma or Rice Road or whatever, there's a stop area, and bikes are, knowing that cars are going to turn, they stop, and they take their time and look. And drivers see that there's a bike path with rails, and so they're not, you know, confused about that with lines on the road or two-way bikes. So I don't know if it's possible, but it hasn't been discussed. And I think that's something that Jeff Otterbine would have good input on, whether that's doable. And I do think there's room. And I also think it leaves the side open where the hospital is for emergency vehicles. They're not going to be slamming any bike riders over there because they'll be on a bike path. So that's one thing. And the other thought that hasn't been mentioned is if there is a citywide 25 mile an hour speed limit, which I've spoken about before, people will be more conscious. And as I've been trying to go 25 in residential streets that are 35 miles an hour just to see what it feels like, it's really nice, and it's completely different. So it's a cheap and easy fix, really cheap. So 25 miles an hour bike path down the Maricopa Highway. Try it out.
Thank you, Cindy. Russell Sidney?
And thank you for the opportunity to speak again, and also for all the amazing work you guys have been doing. And that goes for staff as well. I know it's been a tough several weeks. And it's important. The young man who spoke here really moved me. He's actually one of the reasons why I have been working really hard to take into account all the concerns that have been expressed by the people here tonight. We all share a concern that this, the current design does not work. We all share a concern that we need a better design. But most importantly, we all share a concern about keeping people safe. That includes the drivers. It includes the students that are in Shelley's care. It includes the young man behind us. It includes all the bicycle riders that are here. And what, the reason why we need a two-way bike lane is because the bike safety is in fact broken, as Shelley points out. The two-way bike lane is necessary because getting from Miners Oaks to Vons and to downtown and back is dangerous. El Roblar is a terrible road. Going up Maricopa and crossing over is, is dangerous. Safe routes to school, getting from, from Ojai Avenue to Nordoff, you got to get there, you got to get back. If bicyclists have to cross the road with the chaotic school traffic, no safety in sight. Same applies getting from Miners Oaks to Nordoff, and from Miners Oaks to Matilah and back home. We need safe routes to school. That's why having a two-way lane is important because of those young people. The design that Kathy talked about works. It gives 20 feet for vehicles with an eight-foot lane for them to pull over on the Nordoff side. On the other side, it gives 24 feet for vehicles with a nice wide area to drive and pull over so that you can get out of the way of emergency vehicles. And the hospital side is wide enough to stage any, any vehicles needed for disasters like Thomas Fire. Thank you so much. Let's keep all the people safe. Let's make Maricopa Highway work for all of us, including the bicycle riders. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. And thanks to all of you for making public comments and participating in this, this event. It's wonderful to hear from all of you. So let's open up for discussion.
Are we going to close it?
Yep. Close the session. Yeah, close the, this, and we will open for discussion now.
Can I start? Because I'm on this far end. Are you looking at me? Can I start? For those of you who may be new here tonight, I believe if we count the Zoom meetings, this is, James, you can correct me, this is about our 40th meeting. And at most of those meetings, the, both the, the public comments and the written comments, and the people opposing were either, either equal, or the people in favor were a little bit ahead. So I have, I think we have to accept that as a community, we're having a very different experience, as Robin Gerber articulated so well. I, my family lives in Miners Oaks, and I both ride and bicycle. Usually I drive, usually I drive because I have dogs and grandchildren. They live down the river bottom. But I have only experienced, and I, and I, I go down that little stretch of Maricopa from all directions, I've never experienced any trouble, but I recognize that there are problems. I, this is not to say there aren't problems. I personally have not experienced them. And I, I do this at all different times of the day. So I hope that we can continue with a respectful discussion. And I encourage all of you, some of you may not realize that we have a huge webpage that answers many, many of the questions that have been asked. It's on the city website. And I want, I do want, I want to address just a few points that came up over and over again.
Susan, maybe we should take turns, and then we'll get back. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, can I just finish my, my train of thought?
Sure.
Okay. From, from my perspective, and I'm someone who has attended many, many traffic calming conferences. I've been, I'm not a professional, but this is, is a passion of mine. I've been, I'm not a professional, but this is a passion of mine. I have a huge library, I've worked with the Santa Barbara Traffic Coalition, Ventura Traffic Bicycle Coalition, I've attended three-day workshops, you know, beginning way back in 1990. And the single most important safety feature that we're discussing tonight is removing that, what I call the passing lane. Because it is a fact that the most dangerous point, the most, the greatest danger on any street is speed. And as long as you have the four lanes, you'll have a passing lane where people speed. And that's all I have to say. This is something that you can research and possibly consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Randy, and then Bill?
So, I'm Randy Haney, and I was born in Los Angeles, and I just, which is a lot of passion in this community regarding this ATP project. And we've all demonstrated it to each other, either through the mail, or verbally, or in the 40 meetings. But what's clear is, we could probably use another 40 meetings if we really wanted to solve this as a community. But that's just not going to happen. So I think, I think we're better off tonight just asking some good questions, and asking those questions of each other, and listening to each other, and listening with an open mind, and hearing the passion that was expressed tonight, and hear the passion that's expressed to us privately. One of the things that, after listening to all of the communications tonight, and then being around this for five-plus years, I don't think we ever addressed the actual why. I don't think we've ever really talked about how we take that intersection that, that for me, after listening to everything tonight, seems to be the problem. It seems to me we can't get people from Ojai heading west, and then up Maricopa Highway safely. Whether you're riding a bike on the bike path, whether you're riding the bike on the street, it's, it's not conducive for good community transportation. So, that's the first thing that I would like to ask staff, and maybe ask Steve. What can we do about the why to enhance this project, or are we too late? That'd be one question, you don't have to answer it right now, but that, that I think is an important question. Having two lanes, two bike lanes, running in front of a high school where we're teaching young children at the age of 16 how to drive, doesn't sound conducive to me to good safety. Now, I could be wrong on that, and we haven't had any accidents yet. But that's an issue that I have, is really how safe is it teaching children, or anyone, to ride a bike on the wrong side of the road in an area that is critical to young people learning how to drive, how to enter or drive a parking lot, how to exit a parking lot? So, I'm going to have more questions about this. I'm going to turn my time over to the other council people, but I just wanted to give a shout-out to Atticus, because I did have the privilege of coaching him for two years. And he is an outstanding young man, he's an outstanding student, and I'm glad to see you're involved in our community.
Bill?
We've learned some things from the demonstration project that were clearly mistakes. That's why you do a demonstration project. So, I'm going to, I'm the first one to say that, yeah, zebra-dilloes, planters, and parking the way it was, it doesn't work. And everybody, whether or not they are in favor of staying with the two, the lane reduction or not, seems to have come to the same conclusion. So I tried to focus on what, you know, what's the thing that we already, we've learned, and I think we have a fair consensus on. Doing away with the parking situation, zebra-dilloes, planters, interior planting type of situation, opens up all kind of flexibility to address a number of the problems that have been brought up with respect to having more flexibility with turning in and out, emergency lanes in particular. Given that, and I just ask everyone to think about how, you know, there does seem to be some common sense of what we've learned in that respect, I want to explain why I have the perspective I do on the lane reduction. First, by way of history. This piece of four-lane, the only one we have in the city limits, was put in in anticipation of a larger four-lane cross-valley freeway project. That's a matter of fact. This four-lane was not installed on the basis of any sort of traffic need. It was based on speculation of what amounted in, at that time, to promote sprawl development in terms of expanding the retail area along that stretch of land that is mostly now conservancy. And it was based on anticipating connecting on a four-laning to be brought up from Foster Park, and four-laning to traverse the entire valley. So that's why it was put in. It was pushed by a city manager at the time that wanted to get the four-laning done. He actually was at one point advocating this being, this piece of highway put in to then connect to moving where we are right now, using the valley trail as the four-lane right away. That was the plan, that was stopped by a community uprising, because that's not the kind of character this community wanted. And so what I, when I, and Caltrans has now come to the conclusion that when pieces of four-lane are installed, all connected to two-lanes, it doesn't make any sense, because all you're doing is creating a, an imbalance of traffic flows, actually. And so what I'm trying to say is that, the reason I think that the design needs to be definitely changed, we've learned what was wrong, but why we need to stay, in my opinion, with going to the two-lane lane reduction with a better design, is that it, A, has absolutely been shown by the data to significantly calm traffic speeds. It's not a matter of debate, it slows the traffic down. And that's extremely important. In terms of things like evacuation, people have raised those issues, there have been the studies done that demonstrate that. When you have a very short stretch of four-lane connected to nothing but two-lane, having a properly designed with emergency bypass reduction from four to two does not cause a problem within terms of evacuation. That's one of the things we learned from this demonstration project that were mistakes. So, if we went back to four-lane, we're speeding traffic up. We also, by virtue of that, and people say, well, just have more traffic enforcement. Calming is best done by design, not by enforcement. And I think that if you're talking about pedestrians crossing and being compatible with bicycles, slowing traffic down is a big part of what makes that a reality. So that's my position on the lane reduction. We have mistakes we've learned that need to be corrected from the demonstration project and what we do with final design. I think that we also need to, and then the final point about the two-way versus one-way. Most of the bikers are now treating it as a two-way anyway, and the reason for that is that the, you're coming out on the bike trail, you're crossing with the light, to go to the meadows from the bike trail, coming out of the city of Ojai, for example, means two more crossings across traffic if you don't make that a two-way. Or going to Miners Oaks, two more crossings across traffic. Or if you're going to an event at the church, or something like that. So, my position is, the design needs to change, but we still, I think, should have the inherent traffic calming, and go with the spirit of the people that rejected the four-lane mentality in Ojai so many years ago, and that's why we have just this one small section when people are trying to build more of them.
Oh, we have more of this?
Okay. Ryan, do you want to say something?
The parking idea was stupid, we need to get rid of it. The barrier idea was stupid, we need to get rid of it. I am 100% for making sure that we can get two vehicles with ease past each other on both lanes of this highway. And that most importantly, that if a car comes up behind you that has sirens on it, that might be a police car, or an ambulance, or another emergency vehicle, that you don't get confused or get stuck in where you need to go. That means there can't be trees in that barrier area where there's a buffer zone. That eight-foot area is really the question. I think there's probably, I don't know for sure, but there's probably a consensus on a couple of those issues. Then it comes down to, well, are we still doing the lane reduction? And are we still doing a paint buffer? Or are we having delineators in that area? And that's a more difficult question. I have to admit, there's a lot of good sides on both for whether we do the lane reduction or not. Mr. Wierich's completely right. Historically, it was not designed for the capacity of that road. But that road may increase in capacity. There's a plan, there's a, you know, there's ideas of developing the property across Nordoff. We don't know what Nordoff is going to look like after they potentially redo their property. Unfortunately, we may not have the luxury of knowing all the answers before we have to make a decision on this. But I do agree that it slows traffic down. And there is one key scientific element to safety on any given highway or road, that if a car's going under 35 miles an hour, it's so significantly less likely to cause a serious injury to someone it hits. Over 35 miles an hour is a significant change in how likely they are to be seriously injured. So I do agree that that science is set. So then if we are, and I believe probably my colleagues are over supportive, or not over, excuse me, a plurality of them are supportive of the lane reduction, then it really comes down to a very awkward aesthetic question, which is if we're going to have a dual bike lane on the Nordoff side, which I don't have any problem with, I think personally, I went to Nordoff, I rode my bike there, I lived right behind Nordoff for many, many years. I never thought there was much problem or safety concern. I never was afraid to ride my bike anywhere around there for many years. But that doesn't mean it can't be better, and it doesn't mean that cars haven't got a lot bigger. You know, it's not that they're just going faster, but SUVs are not getting any smaller anytime soon. And there's an additional concern that, you know, it's actually much harder riding your bike around, and this is strange, but when you can't hear vehicles, as we move to EVs, there's a real concern in safety with not being able to hear vehicles coming up on you. And add to that how many people, especially young people, are wearing earphones all the time, and you just can't hear vehicles the same way. So I do think there are other factors that increase why we need to make sure there is safety in bicycling and pedestrian activity, especially near a school like that on a long straight stretch. So if we are going to reduce the lane, then there's this real hard question. We have a dual bike lane, let's say, at Nordoff, we have a single bike lane on the church side. Then we have an eight-foot buffer. Now that buffer is going to be open enough to be able to drive two vehicles through side-by-side if necessary, not on a regular basis, but so you could pull over if a car comes up behind you that's an emergency vehicle, or if there was a really severe emergency, like evacuating for a fire, we'd be able to point two cars down, parallel out of there, including maybe opening all four lanes to get out of town at the same time. As long as you don't put the trees, or the bumpers, or the armadillos, or the parking, or the planters, or this other stuff that we thought we maybe were going to like, as long as that's not in there, then those lanes can be accessed for that. And I had a real serious concern about the evacuation problems. Because you don't find that question out until it's too late, and I think it's imperative in that area, especially that it is towards the evacuation zone for Nordoff being the primary evacuation area. Although, it may not be that we are all trying to get there at the same time, it may not be this or that, but with the added amount of traffic there and the hospitals being there, it's just imperative that we have absolute access to cars wide on that road. So I won't support anything that doesn't do that. But having the vertical delineators versus just the paint is a very interesting question, because I have a feeling that if we put those delineators up, everybody's going to not like them. I think if we don't put them up, nobody's going to like it. I think the paint by itself looks a little weird. I think that's one of the problems with it, is that you have that paint on the ground, and it's kind of like you're driving by a corner of a parking lot at an airport, you know, you're not supposed to go through it or park over there, but it doesn't really keep you away from it, it's kind of wide open. And every bicycle safety enthusiast I've spoke to says a physical barrier besides the paint is absolutely necessary to preserve their safety. Well, if we can fit the both cars by, then the question becomes, all right, if it's not the vertical delineator, only other option are these concrete planters. And that, you know, there's a lot of costs that, they don't, they don't, they look good, but they are, they're very difficult to maintain, and they can be extremely dangerous if anybody happens to run into one. The zebra-dilloes are really kind of supposed to represent that, rather than us have to put in concrete planters. The zebra-dilloes are not really a thing that we're going to be there permanently, the idea is that they're there just to kind of give you an idea. But of course, they're so low to the ground, they're kind of dangerous. Now, on the vertical delineators, there's two styles. There's ones that go up about four feet, and there's ones that go about, I think it's 14, 24 inches, something like that. I know this, that in the areas where the parking, or excuse me, where the turning lanes get tight, because that buffer reduces significantly. So when you're making a right turn into Nordoff, it has to dip into the area that would be that eight-foot buffer, that we have to have a physical delineator there. I think it's imperative, because you're going to have people riding there. But I also think that Nordoff should make a rule, or we should make a rule, to make it real simple, that when it's ingress and egress time coming in out of Nordoff, nobody rides in front of the school. If you want to get onto the campus, you get onto the campus, you ride around the traffic and not through it, because otherwise it is going to be kind of difficult. And I do agree with Mr. Haney in that it's not a great idea to have bikes going both ways at the time Nordoff has to figure out what's going on. But we have to prepare ourselves that if we want to have safety, the problem with safety is that it has to be noticeable, and if it's going to be noticeable, it works. And if there are vertical delineators, there's going to be a lot of pushback. You know, one thing I said about this project the first time I learned about it, was that everybody in Ojai is going to hate it, and that no matter what we do, it's going to be awkward, because people are going to touch, taste, feel, and smell it all the time. And in Ojai, if it changes, and you can see it all the time, most people aren't going to feel real comfortable with it. But this is the new world. I mean, this is what we're trying to do. We've got to understand that we have got to change the way we are. I'm also the chairman of the Air Pollution Control District, and the number-one edict we have is the Air Pollution Control District is getting electric vehicles and bicycles traveling more, so we can reduce the biggest carbon footprint we have, which is our vehicles. And it's imperative that we start building the infrastructure. We can't wait for everybody to have a bicycle and then build it, we've got to put the infrastructure in that makes these things appropriate. And with the young children especially who drive, it's a really, it's a really important part of that. Now, like I said, if we didn't do the lane closure, I wouldn't lose any sleep over it. But if we ever built anything there that didn't allow two cars to go by and emergency vehicles to go by, I'd have a real problem. But we don't have any choice but to put up some delineators. That's going to be a difficult part that everybody's going to have to potentially live with, because it may not look perfect. But if you look at them in other cities, they're not awful, they're just not really common in Ojai. And we have to side on the side of safety at some point over aesthetics, especially in front of a high school, and especially in front of a church, especially in front of a very lengthy road that people have historically driven way too fast on, and that's the truth. We have the data that shows that that is an area, if you're going to hit the gas in your car, that's where people in Ojai did it. It's not the only place, but it's the main place they did. And there's a lot of accidents have occurred that weren't pedestrian-rated, that were related to cars passing each other on Maricopa Highway. So, it's going to be tough. I mean, we're all going to have to live with some amount of change. We're really working hard to get this right. We're admitting, I'm admitting, I know it, I felt it from kind of the beginning, but I still approved the first parking that was there. That parking was awful. Car doors were going into the street, it didn't make any sense. And we have some other options, we've worked with some other agencies where we might be able to find some parking there for the meadows that works, it's much easier and much better. If we can keep the emergency vehicle space open, and we can make it safer for kids to go to school on that dual-lane bike lane, I think that's probably the best way to go. And I think it's imperative that we do, though, accept that there's going to be some parts of it, that to increase safety, you have to decrease aesthetics a little bit. It's not going to look as good maybe as it used to. We'll do our best, but in order to keep that segregated and make sure people aren't running into each other, we're going to have to put some stuff up that's going to be new and change. But that's the way it's going to have to be. And I think at the end of the day, we're going to realize that it's not today and maybe next year, but in five or 10 years, having that infrastructure in place is going to be really important, because that's the way we have to go as a world, and that's the way we have to go, especially as a progressive city who wants to be an example for other cities about how to lead in the climate crisis. And that's why we've named it an emergency, and that's why we're looking at it like this. So, that's my take.
Wow. Well, I just want to thank my esteemed colleagues for working so long. Well, I just want to thank my esteemed colleagues for working so long on this. It's almost unbelievable. And thank you, staff. Forty meetings, so much gratitude for all your work. And it sounds as if we're starting to get to a place of consensus. We all agree clearly that safety is our number one issue. And all the data suggests that slowing traffic is the number one thing we can do. So we're on board there. Um, one, one option that was in the staff report that I would just like to throw out there, as a new, new person to this project, it's nice to have fresh eyes. And, um, as a, a mom who, my kids grew up on the bike trail. I, I lived right over there, and we spent years on the bike trail. And it's, it's a lovely, beautiful aspect of our community. So one option that we could explore is to make it a self-contained bike trail, continue it basically. And, and so it would be bike trail pedestrians that are separate from the road. So think of this bike trail and think of it on that three quarters a mile stretch right there, so that the bikes would not have to, you know, there would be no merging of cars and bikes. It would be just like this bike trail back there. And, you know, as a mother, and as we talk about the safety of our children, you know, I would be, feel comfortable having my kid ride a bike to Nordoff on a bike trail. You know, not so comfortable the way it is now for, you know, depending on the age of the child. So I'd just like to, for all of us to think of that as an option. It's, uh, the design has been made to 10%, so that we can direct staff to, to look at that along with the other, um, plan. The other thing is, I mean, we, we all love Ojai because of the way it feels and looks. It's a small town. The aesthetic is really important. And I agree, Ryan, we're going to have to make some compromise as we move forward. And, and, um, you know, getting off fossil fuels is our number one priority, along with safety, then we're going to have to compromise. On the other hand, you know, a self-contained bike trail is a beautiful thing. We could, we could eventually grow trees, it can be shady. It's, it's a still lovely part of our community and a way for all of us to connect. So, um, just putting that out there.
Can I have another turn? May I have another?
Susan?
Yeah. Okay. Aside from, from your plan, um, I would like to propose that if we go with, um, the, the Maricopa's design that works for everyone, the six foot walk, the two foot shoulder, the two-way separated bikeway, the two-foot marked buffer, the eight-foot vehicle, emergency lane shoulder, the 12-foot driving lane, and then there's the median, that's, that's one side of the street. If we design that in a way that there's no irrevocable changes, and I believe we can do that, but that would involve not having trees in the middle of the street, because I wouldn't want, once they start growing, I would be very reluctant to take them down. I would put all the trees, I still want to see trees, but I would work with the land conservancy and put them, um, on, you know, along the pedestrian walkway on the border of the land conservancy property. I would suggest, highly recommend not, trees are, you know, not putting trees in the design. Just, and that would also help assure the emergency vehicle access, and if we need to open up the lanes, whatever. I'm, I also like the suggestion, and I've been thinking about this myself, is possibly, if, if we could, if, if, if the rest of the council's interested. Oh, I would like to consider what a couple of speakers suggested is possibly, possibly either a stop sign or, uh, something possibly at traffic light, I don't know, but at least a stop sign at Valerio. If, if that, if there's, you know, there does seem to be some, an issue. I don't know. I, I think we have to address that there is, um, a problem at Valerio. There may be a number of ways to address it, but a, a stop sign is a possibly a good idea for, for, you know, there are, it's two-way, make it, make it four-way. Or make it, I, I don't know if that's the solution, but look at some way to solve that. And, and again, it's not a problem all day, but at certain times a day, there seems to be a legitimate problem, and I want to just recognize that. Everybody here does understand that the armadillos and the, um, the planters were never intended to be permanent. A lot of people still don't understand that. And as far as, you know, someone asks, why are they still there? I believe it's required by Caltrans, right? That we need to have some, they really work, they, I, I don't like particularly how they look in the daytime. Not everyone has that strong reaction that they're so ugly, but at night, they're fabulous. You know, they really work at night. They light up and they do the, the job of, you know, creating a delineation.
Yep. To answer that question, so we removed, uh, probably 80 to 90% of the armadillos and the planters, um, as much as we were able to. And we're working with Caltrans to, uh, remove the last few, but we have to replace those with some sort of, uh, to Councilmember Blatt's point, some sort of other delineator. So that's what we're working through right now. That's why those last ones are left.
Good, good. And then, could I say something about this, the, the different ways that we can create a buffer? I don't know that we have to decide that tonight. Could we have a report on the options? And here's the thing, someone mentioned, one of the speakers mentioned a buffer that if you hit it, uh, it, it, you don't damage your car. But of course, the drawback is a buffer that doesn't damage your car also allows you to go, you know, into the bike lane. So we have to, you know, we have to look at the trade-off. And buffers can be different heights. There, there's like, if you look at different cities, there's all kinds of buffers, you know, including natural material, which is difficult in our, in our region, because it's so hot. But, um, I would like to see, you know, and then, um, Mayor Betsy, you're, you're wanting, I, I would like to discuss your proposal. To me, what you're proposing is the ideal, but I don't know if it's doable either time-wise or financially. Those are my two concerns.
Well, and that's what we would ask staff to address. You know, it is doable time-wise, I mean, in terms of finding, figuring out the plan.
Yeah, we still have, um, so the timeline is tight, but we have time to finalize, or, you know, uh, the reason we brought it today was so we could make some decisions and, and choose which way we're going. So we still have, uh, time. It's a tight timeline, but we still have time to pursue either of those designs to, um, to the 90%, you know, either of those 10% designs to get them to the point they need to be to move forward, so.
And, and James, we can look at both of the options, options one and option two?
We could look at both. Uh, obviously, there's a cost to that. We, uh, we estimated that to get the 10% design to 90% design is about $65,000. So, uh, if we were to explore both of those, um, obviously that would be a higher cost. I think one thing we could do is, um, identify, or maybe get each of them to a certain percentage would be one option that we could do if, if we're not ready to, to make that choice.
May I, may I clarify? You're, what are you saying is the cost? You know, the hour is late, so I'm very hesitant. Everything I'm saying is with great trepidation and hesitation. Okay? What are you saying the, the additional cost would be?
So we have two new designs that are at 10%. To get those to the 90% level that the original design was, uh, is approximately $65,000.
Yeah. I don't know that I'm willing to.
What are those, what are those two designs? And so it's the, it's the class four facility, which is essentially the design that is being discussed that takes the parking off. Uh, and then what we could do, I hear the, uh, the support, I think, to, uh, try to widen the driveline so that there's the room for, for, uh, potentially, um, the emergency vehicles. Uh, and so we could take that design and try to explore that and get that to 90%. The, uh, second design is the class one, which is the expand, essentially, you know, turning it into a bike path, basically, putting it up on the sidewalk. So those are both at 10% currently.
Onto that point, Mayor, uh, would it, how far between 10 and 90% before we get a differing cost estimate of those two alternatives?
Uh, Steve, that would probably be a question for you.
I mean, do we have to go to 90% to understand the cost differences?
No, we can probably know, kind of picking a number out of there, you know, around 20% into it. Taking what we have today, it doesn't take that much more effort to come up with a cost estimate that's within 10% of reality.
Right. Yeah, I guess my, I, I support the aesthetics of what you're proposing, Mayor. But it has to be tempered by what the cost differential is, and that's why I was hoping we could learn sooner rather than later, even if we have to call another special meeting to address which of those two to get to. But I, I like the idea of at least getting to the point where we can look at the cost differences to balance against the aesthetic, the aesthetic, uh, value of what you're proposing.
And there is an estimate, um, that is, it's the same cost as the 95% plan that's in right now. It's 1.2.
So, and that, that seems to, you know, it seems like we got to something of a, yeah, you know, no zebra dillows, no interior planters, uh, no parking on their current configuration, and two different ways that involve possibly different costs and different, and some aesthetic trade-offs. I, I, that's what I see we're going.
All right, we're 10% done.
Yeah.
Way to go.
Is, are there?
We're not done.
Randy? Are there a lot of right-of-way issues with, um, Betsy's proposal?
I believe most of the right-of-way issues were on Ojai Avenue. Yeah, so, so not, not much.
That's correct.
Okay.
You know, I'm just going to state this. It's real interesting sitting here as a council member and not necessarily being a part of the discussion, because I don't agree with what you three want to do. But I, but I do want to just make this clear. I'm going to use Bill's argument about what occurred here 50, 60 years ago when they put four lanes in. And the people were in an uproar, and people didn't want it. And so therefore, so therefore, they discontinued connections. And they discontinued this thought of looping this entire community with a freeway. And they did it because the people didn't want it.
Right.
And what did we hear tonight? And what have we heard continuously for the last five years? The people of Ojai do not want it. It's, I'm sorry, Susan, I have the floor. I disagree with you 100%. I don't care what you think you have. The facts are in this report, the facts of what had been presented to us. And yet we still think, three of you think, that you have a right to circumvent this community. And that saddens me, it sickens me, and it really concerns me. We had a public forum here tonight, and it's almost like none of you heard them speak. So, um, again, I'm not going to vote for anything on this, other than one lane going one way, one lane on the other side going the other one, the other way. And, um, that's where I stand. I just, I'm shocked. I'm shocked, because you three are still pushing this concept that the community does not want. So maybe someone needs to answer that.
I will answer it. I'm, I'm happy to answer that.
Go ahead, Susan.
I invite, oh, I invite everyone here to watch the previous city council meetings, where the people speaking in favor were far greater in number than the people opposing. You can go to the city website, they have published all the public comments. And if you read them, you will see wide support for the lane reduction and the safety, uh, so that safe passage for families and children. And there's, there are two groups of people who never speak at these meetings, who need this lane reduction more than you need a passing lane. The elderly that are being pushed in wheelchairs and crossing, they're very slow. We've had several letters from people in wheelchairs who are so relieved by this lane reduction. And that there's no question that the children in Ojai are safer with the lane reduction, especially the young children and, you know, in the upper grades, into the upper grades, but especially the young children. They don't come to these meetings. I can tell you that there are hundreds and hundreds of children that would love to see this. I also lead bike lanes with 50 kids. Traffic in Ojai is now so bad that in order to go to the schools, we need a police escort. Those of you who think that it's not broken, we don't need to fix it, it is broken, especially for children.
Just to say very simply, Randy, that, um, Councilman Haney, that I, I think that traffic calming by design is an inherent safety issue. And I have listened carefully to a lot of the concerns about people, um, worried about the effects on things like emergency transit with, uh, the, uh, reduction from four to two. And that's why I listened very carefully, and I've stated very clearly why I think the design has to involve sensitivity to those absolutely essential issues. And that's why, uh, I'm very ready to say we, you know, have learned from the demonstration project and need to address those concerns by making the changes we're talking about. But I believe that it's in this community's interest to have traffic calming by design. We've had the studies that show that it doesn't cause, um, a, a problem with any kind of, I mean, we've done the traffic studies, we've done the speed studies. And I just, I think I'm, I, I'm not unidimensional on this thing, uh, Councilperson Haney. I just believe that, um, in this particular case, we had a piece of highway design out of character with the community, and we can design it for more inherent safety and traffic calming, while still addressing the concerns raised by the people worried about the change. So that's my position.
So one, thank you, Bill, for that, and I'm sorry for, uh, raising my voice, Mayor. The, uh, the other part of this is also, if four lanes are not what this community is about, then why is a class four bike lane what this community is about? I'm, just someone's, again, no one's answering these questions. They're throwing this stuff out there as if, well, um, we've got to do this and to, to do this, then we need to put a class four bike lane, because that fits Ojai. That fits Ojai like what? Someone, someone tell me how a class four bike lane fits Ojai, and it doesn't. And I, and I'm, just for the life of me, I'm lost on anyone's, um, ability to communicate that to me, that this is a better fit. And, you know, regarding safety, um, there's more than one way to slow traffic down on that stretch of the highway. More than one way. And accidents, even if we did slow it down, are still going to occur. That's why they're called accidents.
Well, and Randy, what about a, um, you know, a, a separate bike trail?
A separate bike trail adjacent to your, uh, main street in front of a high school. Again, I, I can't see it, I just can't visualize that being Ojai. I'm sorry, I'm just, it's maybe on the backside of it, but not in front of it, not alongside of it. I've just, I'm not going to support it. Just not, so.
That's all right, there's five of them.
That's fine with me, I'm the Lone Ranger. It doesn't, this is not the end of my world. I get it.
Ryan?
I just want to say, Mr. Randy, I, I agree with you. I think it has been a lost fact in this, that, and, and I've talked to so many people about it. We've been doing this a long time on this topic. I do not think a majority of people in Ojai, whether you're in the city or in the valley in general, support this. I don't think they support the lane reduction. But as long as a majority of my council members do, then I'm going to try and make the best darned design I can, and I'm going to support that, because if we're going to reduce the lane, then we got to make it the best we can. But I, I do agree with you. I think that there has been a misconception between people that have spoke at council meetings and the massive amount of data that we receive, because this project required a lot more outreach than just people talking to council members. And I've talked with, I can't tell you how many hundreds, if not thousands, of people in the community. And it is overwhelming that there is a, there is not a consensus of support for the lane reduction in general. But I also appreciate that we screwed it up so bad with the parking and the armadillos and the planters, that it's all getting a little confused. And And I don't know anymore whether the public is just against those aspects of it that are horrible, or they're against the lane reduction in general. But I do agree that this is not something that has a large consensus. But at the end of the day, if we're going to do it, I hope we can do it the best way we possibly can do it.
And, and I think it's also really important to keep in mind that this all happened during COVID, stops and starts, and, and with some staff changing. So it's made the process much more challenging for everybody.
May I make a comment, Mayor Betsy? You know, there are times, I think, when your elected officials do have to take a stand that may not be popular with the majority of the community. Let's say that the majority does oppose this. I'm not convinced. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. But consider this, if, if we went with the majority, the schools would still not be integrated, we'd still have segregation. Think of all the things that the majority of the public opposed, but the elected officials had to look into the future, they had to take a greater perspective and to do what they felt is for the greater good. And maybe this is one of those situations.
I'm not going to, I'm not sure I'm going to raise this lane reduction to the, the status of, of integration, but nice try, Susa. But, but I do hear your point, and it is well taken.
One other concern I'd like to address by citizens, that is the accepting grant money and not taking away local discretion. I've been very much on record of being very defensive of local discretion in many different areas. Been very consistent with that. I really believe in that. But I want to point out that my understanding of this, and staff can contradict me if need to be, is that this is a construction grant on a state highway. The, in fact, the state, this is a state highway project where the state is basically, Caltrans is giving us more local discretion than we normally would have, you know, in terms of a, a state-owned right-of-way. And so we're exercising that discretion. And I think once we, once the grant is used and the construction completed, I don't believe there's any ongoing strings beyond that after, after the conclusion of, of construction, unless we do things like trees and planter beds that we've eliminated. So that's my understanding. I just wanted to speak to that.
That's correct.
And just one, one theme that we've been hearing quite frequently, let's make it about the kids. I mean, of course, it's all about our community. We're all, it's about the children, their children, their children's children, and so on. And what legacy do we want to leave behind for them?
When you look at me, I have two grandchildren. So I think what we're doing is we're doing it well here in Ojai. And I don't think that this lane reduction is going to make my grandchildren's life better or not better. I, I, it's inconclusive. So again, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to go there in, in that discussion. When I moved here, my nine-year-old son could ride his bike up and down this community, and he did. And I believe that my grandchildren at, at nine years of age will be able to do the same. So we're doing something good here in this community. And for some reason, we seem to think that we're going to change it by bringing in some Class Four boondoggle, or we're going to manipulate this, or change that, or do this. So I'm, I'm sorry, guys, I, I'm, I'm not going to beat this horse to death, but I can't support it. So I will support the 150, and I believe we did an incredible job tonight. And I'd like to thank you all for that. But again, the 33 just confounds me, and I, I can't go there with you four. So we want to give staff direction? What do we want to do here?
Well, I was a.
Is there a motion?
I was a, well, I'll attempt one if the mayor thinks it's in order. Okay. Pretty much along the lines that we've already stated here. I think Ryan started, Betsy, you, you kind of completed. And that is that we, we consider, we continue with the lane reduction principle with the elimination of what we've learned from the demonstration project that's a mistake, namely the interior street parking, interior street planters, interior street zebra dills, and that we take the two 10% alternatives up to the point where we can establish the difference in cost. And then we bring it back to council to decide which one to go with. That would be my motion.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Great. All right, may we have a roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Wirick?
She called me?
Mayor Portem Wirick, sorry.
Yes, if that, did I hear my name? Yes.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for moving the ball forward and getting some progress here.
We all know where we stand.
All right, we're going to move on to the third section now, James, the, getting the approval for their right-of-way contracts.
Yeah, and we can keep it brief. Of course, if there's questions, we're happy to answer them. But essentially, that last recommendation, number four on, in the agenda, which was to approve now the, essentially the amendments and the agreements to do this work, to, to pursue the alternate designs, to do the right-of-way engineering, and to move that project forward. So I know we mentioned earlier that the right-of-way engineering and the right-of-way acquisitions, just a little more information on that is that, again, the sidewalks and different, some of the curb improvements affect private property because of the way it was developed. And so the right-of-way acquisition is correcting some of those issues, which is positive in the long run, but also necessary for the project. So, so with that, we're asking for council to approve those amendments and those agreements that were listed. The last one, the last item on the agenda as part of those agreements was the $65,000 to take one of the designs to completion. I think we'd need to modify that a little bit. I think we're taking the two, both 10% designs to about 20%. And then from there, we'll take one to completion. But other than that, those recommendations are the staff recommendations at this time.
The reason I'm going to move approval for that is I've got educated a lot in the recent times, thanks to staff, recent weeks, on this right-of-way issue. And you know what? This is a long-term thing. This is a long-term interest of the city. Even if we run out of money to do the sidewalks in this project, we want to have that right-of-way clarified for future. And so I, I just think it's the right thing to do. Even if we run out of money, we, we want the right-of-way. That's my motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll support the motion because I heard James changed the, the 65 for one to 20%, 20% for the two. Yes.
All right, roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Haney? I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Great, all right, well, that's settled. Thank you very much. And thank you all, those of you who are still here, for sticking out, sticking out with us. And thank you for your contributions and participating in democracy. So thank you all, my colleagues and James.
Can I, hey, can I make one comment? Thursday is our centennial, our 100th anniversary, and this is our last meeting prior to then. So for anybody watching or anybody here, Thursday at Sarzadi Park, we will have snow cones and other festivities. So join us at Sarzadi Park on Thursday afternoon for our centennial celebration.
From 4:00 to 7:30.
4:00 to 7:30, thank you.
Happy birthday, Ojai.
Yes.
All right, thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.